I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice has been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 11th, 2008, said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Triton News. Second, on January 11th, 2008, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 11th, 2008, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, Preventorium Road, Howell Township, New Jersey. Public participation at this meeting is permitted. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code, be advised that this facility is designed with three emergency exits for your safety. The locations are as follows. Upon exiting the meeting room to the rear, they are to your immediate left and immediate right, and at the front of the meeting room at the left of the dais. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Frazi?
Absent.
I didn't hear from him this evening. Mr. Seiya?
Present.
Mr. Schneider is excused. Mr. Tantillo?
Here.
Ms. Sina Castro?
Here.
Mrs. Clark?
Present.
Mrs. Dalton will be here this evening but a few minutes late.
Okay.
Mr. Morello?
He's absent right now.
Chairman Estevez is excused this evening. Chairman Vislacki?
Here. Folks, can we please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence in remembrance of those who are overseas securing and those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have approval of regular meeting minutes for 5:108. Any comments from the board? Can I have a motion, please? Some moved. A second. What was that? I made it. Oh, then, Mr. Tantillo, anybody's second?
I'm second.
Oh, Mr. Burgess?
Mr. Burgess, any motion with Tantillo?
No. Okay.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Ms. Sina Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Vislacki?
Yes. Vouchers, I believe we had some vouchers. Mr. Castro, did you get a chance to come over?
Yes, I reviewed them and they appear fine.
Okay, yeah, I also got the, first I got the same ones, but then they sent me, and everything was in order, so can we have a motion to approve the vouchers?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
All right.
And I'll second that.
And Mr. Tantillo, second it. That's it, we don't have to roll call for that.
All in, yes.
Yeah, all in favor? Anybody opposed?
I prefer a roll call.
A roll call.
A roll call, okay.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Ms. Sina Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Vislacki?
Yes. We have some correspondence, I think there's two notices from Mr. Davis, the first one consider concerning an amended land use, stormwater management control, and basin cost calculations ordinance number zero dash oh eight dash nine. Any comments from the board concerning this ordinance?
You're on the air.
No, sir.
Okay, so I guess we, our response to the council would be?
It would be that, excuse me, the proposed ordinance is consistent with our master plan.
Okay. The next one is an amended-
Mr. Chair, we just need a roll call on that.
Oh, we need a roll call on that, sorry.
Or actually, was there a motion?
Oh, can we have a motion to?
You have a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Tantillo and Burgess?
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Ms. Sina Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Vislacki?
Yes. Second one is amendment from Mr. Davis dated 5:2108, amended land use, resident adult community zone, ordinance number zero dash oh eight dash one six. Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, just, I believe, and I think this is of interest, and we discussed it before, that the ordinance and the zone was crafted such that the mobile home park is not part of that zone. I believe that's correct, right?
Yes, that's correct.
However, based on the master plan amendments that were made last year after public hearing and adoption, this ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan. While my personal feelings, I'm not opposed to the residential adult community zone, I think it's a good thing, but in its present state for this area, it's inconsistent with the master plan because the recommendations of the master plan were for ARE4, I think it was for low-density, single-family housing. So, I don't know how we go about just drafting a comment to the council in that, to that regard, or?
Well, the process would work like this. If you, if the majority tonight believes that it's inconsistent, we would just, we would put that in the form of a memo to the town council, because I think, Julie, this is coming up for a vote pretty soon, right?
Yes.
Next week?
Yes.
Yeah, it's their next council meeting, so we would do a memo to the town council stating that we, if you so vote, that we believe it's inconsistent with the municipal master plan because the proposal, our proposal for that area, our policy recommendation was for a lower density development. It doesn't mean that the town council cannot adopt the ordinance.
Right.
They're just gonna have to, they have to adopt it by a majority of the full authorized membership, which means that three people have to vote for it, no matter how many council people show up at the meeting, and then they would have to adopt a resolution just stating their reasons as to why they're adopting a, an ordinance that's not consistent with the master plan.
Right.
But in doing that, I just want to be clear also, that does not mean that the ordinance would necessarily be in jeopardy-
Right.
-or were more open, that's just the process that has to be followed if you're gonna do it.
Exactly. Anybody else on the board feel likewise, I'd just like to get the comment?
I agree, Mr. Vislacki, or Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we so state that this is inconsistent with the master plan and forward it to the council.
I concur.
Mr. Chair, I agree with you also. Can we just have some comments from our planner, because they did work on this, I believe, right?
Yes, that's correct. I agree with Curtis with his recommendation, because it is inconsistent with the master plan, because back in November 19th, 2007, we revisited this area and zoned it for ARE4, the whole entire area, based on the lot sizes and the environmental constraints that were existing within that area.
Yep. Can we also have that, like, in our memo, the reason why that it's inconsistent because of the reasons what Mark just stated? To, that was the goal of the master plan, and that was the conclusion, and why we did that was because of the lot sizes and the environmental constraints?
Of course, Mr. Chairman. If, if the RAC zone that's being proposed is consistent or very similar to the density that was previously, you know, voted upon, then that would be something, it would be a wash to some degree, no, Mark?
No, densities are different.
Yeah, because we were looking at-
What are we looking at?
Use four, one home per four acres. ARE4.
And with an RAC, what are you looking at, Mark?
That one, it's one for, I think it was one for three.
One for-
Now, one unit for every acre.
One unit for, what's one unit for every acre, or three units for every acre?
I think it's three units.
Three, yeah, three units.
Three units per acre.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be an R3. But we recommended, because of the environmental constraints and the lot sizes, to go with ARE4 at the time of the master plan adoption, which would be one home for every four acres. All right, I need, I think Mr. Burgess had made the motion to make that our comments, I just need a second.
I'll second that.
And Mrs. Clark, shorter Clark, can we have a roll call, please?
That was, Mr. Burgess and Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Ms. Sina Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark? Yes. Chairman Vislacki?
Yes. Okay, moving on to resolutions, we have Howell Jackson Medical Center, case number SP918, resolution approving sign review, eligible voters are Burgess, Seiya, Schneider, Tantillo, Sina Castro, Clark, Morello, and Estevez. Any comments?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Seiya and Mrs. Clark?
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Ms. Sina Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cacharo, you said the Ashley Furniture Resolution's gonna be?
Yeah. Carried to the next meeting.
Carried to the next meeting?
You all have it, but we're carrying it to the next meeting.
Okay. So it leads us to our cases. First-
Mr. Chair, just one moment, if I may.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't get you before we went to resolutions, and I know we have a full play, I'd just like to bring up two things, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. Some of our board members may know that there was an introduction of an Assembly Bill 2867, which is for the extension of permits.
Ron, do you know that?
Yes.
Okay. It was introduced May 22nd, '08, it ran through the Assembly's Housing and Local Government Committee on June 5th, and I believe it went to the Senate on 6/13. I personally called my local legislator not supporting this act. You know, I was told that the reason why they were doing this was because the state was in a state of an emergency for economics, and basically that this was for, because the costs were so expensive for the builders to do business in New Jersey, and the process goes with the planning boards and zoning boards, so forth and so on. And what I could tell you is that this is like a big Band-Aid on an artery wound. By proposing to just put extensions on the permits of approvals, and I believe that it just got reduced from, originally it was 2006 through 2012, it's now gonna be 2008 to 2010, which is a little better. But, to me, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, you know, we're going kinda backwards with this, you know, we see our township approving an ordinance, for example, with the stormwater management, and now a builder comes in and he's gonna, you know, go back to the rules that were prior to the townships, moving forward on good things. It's kinda like, you know, drunk driving laws that were 15 years ago, somebody's drinking, and now they get to go to the rules that were 15 years ago because we made the rules stronger. So I would just ask, I don't know how my fellow board members feel about, if they're against this, that we might ask the council to make a resolution showing that we're not in favor of this kind of legislation by the, by our state legislators.
So, Mr. Castro, you're saying that all approvals would be grandfathered?
That's correct, that's-
So they wouldn't have to be built, they could just be carried on? Isn't there any limitations, or?
According to what's, what was proposed, it just says that the, the extensions are gonna be, the act will be known, it may be cited as the Permit Extension Act of 2008, and any approvals that were prior to 2000, or after 2008, would be the extension, so any, any rules, basically. Am I correct, Ron?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the state's been down this road before. There was a previous Permit Extension Act, I believe in the late 80s, early 90s, that extended approvals when there was a previous economic crisis. Mr. Sina Castro is on point as to, you know, the basic rationale behind it, although the legislature also has in mind not just the builders, but employees of them and contractors and, and things, and people like that, that might be missing out on, on jobs if the permits and approvals were allowed to expire. In terms of the environmental, I believe there's a carve-out for the Highlands, for the Pinelands, and for the Meadowlands District.
Right.
But obviously, we don't fall into, into any of those categories, so, I mean, it is, it is what, you know, Mr. Sina Castro said, that the approvals would be given extra time, and I imagine the state would revisit it as well at the end of that period of time to reassess the economic situation.
I'm in favor of what Mr. Sina Castro said, I think we could make a draft or a letter to the council, asking them to write, I guess-
A resolution.
Resolution, or saying that we're not in favor of this. Anybody else on the, on the board have any comments?
I feel the same way.
I personally don't disagree with what has been said, but I, I would like to spend some time without, without reviewing it myself. I'm not comfortable really getting on board until I read the entire thing, read the legislative history, and take a look at it personally. I certainly think that your comments are, are valid and of a big concern, certainly to this board, but without me reading it line by line, I'm just not comfortable at this point, really-
It's understood.
...you know, speaking about it.
So I need a, a motion in a second, if that's something that we wanna do.
Well, I'll make the motion that we ask council to draft the resolution not supporting Assembly Bill Number 2867. That's proposed to be passed by Senate, it's moving very quickly in the House.
You want to review it, Sis, first?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my suggestion would be, I think your point is a good one, I would just ask that the board consider just carrying it till our next meeting. I understand this is, time is of the essence, I just personally would like to really take some time and take a look at it myself before I really sign on to that.
Mr. Castro, any objection with carrying it?
With all due respect, it's gonna be passed by time our next meeting. It was introduced on May 22nd, went to the Assembly Housing and Local Committee on June 5th.
That's the Assembly part of it, though.
Right, now, now, June 13th, and went to the Senate.
Right, I don't think the Senate will have voted on it by the time we, you know, in two weeks.
Well, then I'm, then I'm fine with it, if Ron feels that we have enough time.
Does everybody else feel it's warranted to carry, or is it something that we should move forward with?
I'm in favor of just tabling it and let Mrs. Clark read it and get into it a little more, and there's nothing to stop us from making a motion next meeting. I agree.
Okay, I'm fine. Mr. Chair, what the board could do, without taking a position yet, is just communicate to the council through a memo that they might wanna look at the legislation themselves in the meantime.
That sounds, that sounds good. I think that would, that we're very concerned about this, and that we, although we haven't taken an official stance, we'd like them to really take a close look in whether or not they agree or disagree.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I believe that was brought up at the last council meeting.
It was?
I think so, yes.
Okay. And what was the council's position, was it?
You know, maybe we could wait till Mrs. Dalton, I understand she is gonna be here shortly, she could probably address that, and we could, we could advise her personally of our concern on the issue, but I think you get a very good point about-
We could definitely come back to this after hearing applications, all right?
And Mr. Chair, then, in that case, I would also like to hold off on my second comments, because I would like Councilwoman Dalton to be here.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
We'll definitely, and remind me to, to bring those back up. All right, under our applications for this evening, we have a final major subdivision, case number SD2899F, application of Sierra Builders LLC, Susan Bellon is applicant and owner seeking a final major subdivision, subdivide property into 21 lots, 19 lots for single-family residential development, two for stormwater management in the R3 zone on premises known as Block 65, Lot 56. Aldridge Road was partially heard on 4308 and 3608, adjourned for further hearing. Eligible voters are Seiya, Schneider, Tantillo, Sina Castro, Emilio, and Estevez, expires 7/31/08.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Flager, Martin Flager for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Flager.
As I spoke to your council, unfortunately, our engineer, without advising us until yesterday, left Abington and went to another firm, which leaves us without an engineer this evening. So unfortunately, I didn't have time to communicate that earlier, I was in touch with Mr. Cacharo yesterday, and so unfortunately, we'll not be able to proceed this evening, and we'll have to carry it, and we'll consent to the next available date, but we did have two issues that we had to look at, and speaking with Ron, maybe we can just at least address those.
Mr. Chair, there was a few issues that were, that were raised at the last meeting regarding the original preliminary approval. One was whether there was to be an emergency access to Goodell Drive or not. I went back into the record and looked at it, and certainly, the board did discuss it with the applicant at length. After that, there were several residents from Goodell Drive that were here that testified against it, you know, put their personal knowledge of the area on the record, and it was not a unanimous decision by the board, but the majority of the board determined that they would not, you know, I think persuaded by the residents' personal knowledge, that they were not gonna have the emergency drive to Goodell. So, that's my view of it. So, I think, just from the legal standpoint, the applicant, the plan that was put forward for final in that regard is consistent with the, with the preliminary. The second issue was a concern raised about the affordable housing unit. One of the lots is gonna have a triplex on it for the affordable housing unit, it actually provides fractionally a little bit more affordable housing than is actually generated under the growth share. However, it winds up, you know, ultimately being calculated. The ordinance not only allows a triplex, you can actually put a duplex on, on the property. So, the plain language of the ordinance allows the triplex. The second issue to that was whether there should've been a floor plan or schematic submitted with it. Our ordinance refers to COAS regulations in terms of bedroom distribution, and requires that you be consistent with COAS regulations, and the reason for that is we wanna get credit, you know, for, for these units. So, there's no option but that they have to comply with the, with the bedroom distribution, and that gets addressed in a developer's agreement, and the, the town's Affordable Housing Council and Housing Administrator take a look at that. The issue of what it is exactly they have to show us, the checklist does require architecuals be submitted, it's not specific as to what that entails. I know in some municipalities, they'll put architecuals, which include, you know, floor plans and things like that. What I can tell you is, in most cases, we're not looking for floor plans for non-affordable units, but we do have the look-alike ordinance and things like that, so we do get to see, you know, conceptually what the houses are gonna look like, so I think it's within the ordinance that we at least get to see what the try is gonna look like from, from outside, if not the, the actual floor plans, and there was no waiver that was granted from that checklist requirement.
Mr. Flager, so objections with the-
Mr. Chairman? No objection.
On, on the first issue, Ron, you know, I go back to this over and over again, is what I'm hearing, that on the, on the property line, where Goodell was supposedly to be cut in, that on this application, there'll be a home there, and then on the far end of that property line, where, that's no longer township right-of-way? That's, that's now becomes part of, are we giving that to the, to the homeowner, or? Because that was a right-of-way on the other side, which was, which is a road that was supposed to be cut through, and I get, you know, I don't wanna hear the story here, I just wanna, you know, get, what I'm saying is, not, not from you, I'm just talking about the way this whole thing has developed. I wanna make sure I'm clear on what we're, what we're doing here. So your, your questioning is, what happens to the township right-of-way if, if we're not gonna allow a road to go? Absolutely. All right, so, Mr. Flager, can you address that?
Vislacki, if I can, I don't, my engineer is obviously not here, but the plan, if you go back to the plan, the curb line of Goodell actually goes to our property line. I don't believe there's a right-of-way, it's, actually, Goodell stops on the property line, so there's no vacature of a, of a right-of-way issue that you might have, I mean, Goodell will stay the way it is, I'm assuming no one's gonna reconfigure that, and it runs actually straight on our property line.
Okay.
And this, this one lot, you go up to the, the back of that house, will run up to that property line.
It'll show, it'll show that on a survey?
I think Ernie probably can- So then, Ernie?
The answer is, is that Goodell Drive is a right-of-way, and instead of it just being a circle that touches at one point along that common property line, there was a 50-foot straight piece put in in case the road would be put in. So the answer to your question is, the board voted five to four to approve the plans as they were, there was significant comments and discussion about the board wanting the road through, but it was voted without it, and proposed Lot 16, which has 100-foot rear yard width, 50-foot of that'll be along the right-of-way of Goodell Drive, without access. But yes, it will have created a through lot, a lot with frontage on two streets.
And that we can address during an application, the final? Or is that, was that, was that opposing issue now for the applicant? Well, if we granted preliminary with, with that condition the way it is, we can't go back and have them revise that at final, because it's, you know, that, that should've been addressed at preliminary.
Well, you're correct, and it was, and like Ernie said, it certainly was not a unanimous vote by the board, but we can't change it now on, on final, when you granted the approval at, at preliminary. And let me tell you, particularly on final, where there's no notice to, to property owners, those residents were here and they saw a certain action taken by the board.
Right, and we came with several concepts, and one of them actually could've been to leave, actually, to keep the same number of lots and to keep an access point there. And with that vote was six to three, to get rid of it, and that's what we came to you with in preliminary, and you voted on, and then we submitted that as a final, so it's not that we didn't, wouldn't have done it, we could've actually done it.
Right, you just followed the direction of the board.
And now I'm concerned, well, obviously, I would be concerned if we had to go back, notice issues, the residents, leaving myself open at that point, as well as the board is leaving themselves open.
Well, I just hope everybody who's in, in favor of this and not opening it up, that they all buy a house on Aldridge Road, right by that, this development, and live there for 30 years. I agree with your concerns, and unfortunately, at that time, the-
It was voted on.
It was voted on, I mean, the testimony, the hearing took place, and a decision was made. Whether it was the correct decision can be debated, you know, back and forth, but nonetheless, that was the decision that was made, and that's what we have to adhere to, so. What else, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman-
So you have, you're gonna ask to be carried, do we know?
We, we have a date in September.
September 4th?
September 4th.
Yes.
And we consent to that?
Extension?
It's time to-
So there's no further notice at all?
Right, I'll, I'll make the announcement. The application of Sierra Builders LLC, application number SD9-2899F, for a final major subdivision, will be carried to September 4th, 2008, here in the main meeting room of Town Hall on Preventorium Road, no further, there was no notice, so there will continue to be no notice, that's gonna be given to anybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next case is preliminary and final site plan and minor subdivision, case number SP916 and SD2933, application of Fort Partners LLC as applicant, and MF Finehold Limited Partnership as owner seeking preliminary and final site plan, minor subdivision to consolidate lots, and yield two new lots for construction of a one-story Walgreens Pharmacy, one-story bank building with drive-through window, services in the HD1 Zone on the premises known as Block 137, lots 52, 52.01, 52.02, and 53, Route 9 and Four Plains Road, was partially heard on 5/15/08, and adjourned for further hearing. Eligible voters are Burgess, Seiya, Tantillo, Vislacki, Sina Castro, Clark, Dalton, Morello, and Estevez. Good evening, Mr. Page.
Good evening, Mr. Page.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professional staff, and public. My name is Kenneth Page of the firm Heilburn, Page &amp; Goldstein, and I am the attorney responsible and privileged to represent your applicant this evening. As the chairman indicated, this application was presented in part to the board during the earlier hearing. We were able to provide, the board provided us with an opportunity for our design engineer to discuss the minor subdivision and to outline the site plan. We also had operations testimony shared with the board. Since the last meeting, I have had an opportunity to meet with Patrolman Scott Brooks, who is the safety officer who reviewed this application. I met with him yesterday, and we have some revisions to the plan that we're going to offer for the board's consideration. Mr. Brooks gave me the following authority, and I was flattered that he did so. He said that I could, because he would not have a chance to write a letter, that I could speak on the record as to the nature of our discussion, and that he would confirm it with a letter. And I would invite, as we reached that part of the hearing, I would invite, if you find his recommendations and my statements to be acceptable and credible, he will verify his acceptance after the fact. Today, he had a personal--
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we absolutely get the verification.
Get the letter from him, yes, absolutely.
We have no problem.
But you can bring his--
I'll share with you what we worked out. And what we'd like to do this evening is to have our engineer, for Mr. DeFalco, to do a brief sum as to where we left off. I'm going to give a brief outline. We'll then, after Mr. DeFalco completes that, I'm going to ask him a couple of questions about revisions that have been made to the plan. Then, Mr. Kenneth Fears is our traffic engineer. I have a couple of questions for him with regard to circulation and parking. And we have an architect with us this evening who's responsible for the design of the building, and he will share with you a couple of comments on the building design, and more importantly, the compliance of the building with your ordinance's requirements for commercial building design. When we were here the last time, we presented the minor subdivision request. There was a minor subdivision to create two lots from this property so that the bowling facility would have its own lot, and there'd be a new lot created that would be an opportunity for the Walgreens and Bank. That testimony was placed on the record. There were some technical variances that were created because the line would be going down between the two buildings, and the testimony on those points were shared with the board. With regard to the site plan, we had pointed out that we had gone to the Environmental Commission for their review. I note that the record now includes their letter indicating that they have no objections to the application as it's presently presented. We pointed out to them and to this board that the property currently has no stormwater management system at all, and there is now a full, modern stormwater management system for the entire site. We pointed out that the facilities on-site are currently tied to septic and well, and we would be introducing the municipal water and sewer facilities to the site.
Let the record show Mrs. Dalton has arrived at 8:07.
We also, good evening. We also went through the design of the parking system and pointed out that currently, there's little true control of traffic access from the rear or the front, and that there is now full control, and all of the points of access are defined. And in fact, the points of access now are designed with a logic that introduces the traffic to the parking fields in a way that makes sense. What I'd ask is if Mr. DeFalco could, from an engineering perspective, just do an overview, utilizing the plan that had previously been marked as an exhibit, and we'll go to the new testimony.
Thank you. The site, as you recall, is between Route 9 and Fort Plains Road, and the proposal is to connect it with the driveway from Fort Plains to Route 9, circular loop around the Walgreens and Bank, which then connects to the bowling alley existing driveway, which also comes back to Fort Plains Road. So circulation-wise, we have very good flow in and around the parking lot. We have adequate parking on-site for this Walgreens. We talked about the shared parking. The bowling alley has an agreement in place with the Walgreens to share parking, and we think that's going to work well. The drive-through window is located in the back of the building, it's for the pharmacy, there's two windows for the pharmacy. We've redirected the traffic from earlier plans. Now, it goes around the bank to the south. Those are the plans before you. The center aisle is for loading and trash pickup only. So no cars will go through here. We have bollards blocking this that are flexible, that the trucks will drive across, but the cars will not drive across. We've modified the plan in accordance with all the comments of the engineer, and we are putting water and sewer on the site where none exists now. We have an issue, just to talk about briefly, last time we talked about a tree near our sign. A tree is proposed to be removed, and I think since the last meeting, several of the professionals have looked at that tree, and I think the consensus is now that the health of the tree and the location of the tree is something that we can take care of, take the tree out without any real harm or impact to the surrounding area. We have, as Ken said, met with the police patrolman, and his recommendation, I have a sketch of what we did give to his department, is to place speed calming devices to take each of the crosswalks that are delineated on the plan, and to make those raised level plateaus, six feet wide, which will calm the traffic by introducing a change in grade at the front and the back, also on the side parking lot. In between the two traffic calming devices, four rubble strips are going to be installed, which are the cuts in the pavement, as you probably hear, like on the parkway on the shoulder if you run off the road. We'll have those cut right across. There'll be four of those, and the two-speed humps, another rubble strip across the front. And that treatment will reduce the speed, and that was the patrolman's main concern, to reduce the speed, because the circulation is important. But he didn't want anybody speeding through and cutting through and making it a shortcut. So having this will make them slow down enough that it will aggravate the person who just wants to cut through. And that's what he said he would approve. And that's the plan that he received. He wasn't in today to write the letter, but that's what he discussed.
We, of course, recognize that his written verification of that is something you need in your file.
Exactly.
But he had, we talked about these raised, he called them walking tables, so that they're pavers, the crosswalks are pavers, they have a dimension so that they're gradually three or four inches higher than the actual roadway. They have the same effect as a speed hump, but not, it doesn't launch a fireman off the back of a fire truck if they went over it. And they happen to be very attractive, because they're done in pavers. And the rumble strips were something that he added. I will, because he authorized me to make the statement, we talked about the fact that there was currently the opportunity to cut through this site, and it's been there for many years. And it's not a volume problem. People don't use it with any frequency. He said that his concern was this central location would look like a roadway, and if people used it, they might do so with some speed, not recognizing they're in a parking field, just get the speed down. So these traffic calming, speed-reducing techniques were to his satisfaction. With regard to the Route 9 access, I'd like you to speak just briefly. When we were here last, we talked about the current access to the site, the informality and the number of parking, the number of opportunities to enter the site. And if you could talk about the modification, the centralization of the access to the site from the highway.
Yes, presently, the bowling alley access is the northernmost access. That will remain under the present plan. There is existing now three other openings in the right-of-way where driveways cut through tonight. So we're going to locate only one dual driveway at this point here, which is pretty much centrally located between the bowling alley driveway and the self-storage driveway. So we have equal spacing on both sides, and that's going to eliminate two other driveways which presently exist.
From a design-engineering perspective, are you comfortable confirming on the record that you find this to be a superior and safer means of ingress and egress to the site?
Yes, and it's all been done, of course, in accordance with the New Jersey DOT standards and guidelines. And the permit for that has been intrepid and is pending with this drawing, as you see it here.
And I'm going to ask one more brief overview. There's considerable landscaping on the property, and there's also some additional landscape comments that we received from the professionals. Could you repeat on the record the nature of the landscaping and the applicant's willingness to add the additional landscaping as requested?
Yes, this rendering reflects the additional landscaping. What that included was adding shade trees along the entrance that are symmetrical, skewed at the entrance, and then we have shade trees added on both sides of the driveway. We have changed the type of tree against the bowling alley to be less spread and more upright tree. And the other comments weren't really significant, but we do have on the plan a buffer established within the edge of the woods. We're retaining a 50-foot wooded buffer, and then in addition to the woods remaining, we are supplementing that with evergreens along the edge, so as to provide a four-season buffer from the neighboring home.
And lastly, you've had the opportunity to review the professional staff reports, and in fact, to meet with the professional staff to engage in exchange of information and ideas. Are you comfortable advising the board that the specifications, the details, the notes, and the technical requests to modify the plan as set forth in those reports are acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further of Mr. DeFalco at this time. Will, he'll remain available for the board's and the public's examination. If you wish to examine him at this time, he's available, and if not, we'll go to the next witness.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If I may. Mr. DeFalco, when you talk about the health of the tree, does that mean you're actually going to save it and move it?
No, no. The tree is very old, very large, it can't be moved.
Okay.
But it is not in prime condition. Most of its branches have been either affected by the, I'm guessing, the highway environment over the years, and there's a lot of it missing. The crown isn't symmetrical, it's, it looks like someone took a big bite out of it. It's not really--
All right, so you're going to remove the tree?
We're going to cut it, yes.
And Mr. DeFalco, our certified tree expert, looked at that with you and came to the same conclusion, right?
That's my understanding.
All right, then I have another question on where the bollards are going to go. Is there going to be a sign there that says trucks only, no cars? Or you're just going to leave the bollards and--
The bollards are there, the bollards are there, and they'll speak for themselves. There's no sign. But they're close enough together that unless you drive over them, you won't get through them.
Okay.
But they are flexible. In other words, there is a, it bends.
We're not going to get kids with four-wheelers trying to go through it there, is that what I'm saying?
No, no.
Okay, well, last but not least, then, Title 39, then, you--
We agreed to that, yes.
Agreed to Title 39 on this property, thank you.
We welcome Title 39.
Thank you.
Do you know that a number of townships now will not, when we make the request, they won't enforce it? An increasing number won't enforce Title 39 private property. So we welcome that, and we appreciate that that's your direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Page, you want to continue?
If I might, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. DeFalco, Mr. Fears, if you could join us.
Good evening. Mr. Fears, could I be sworn?
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Kenneth Fears, F-E-A-R-S, Oracle Engineering, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Mr. Chair, although the board members have heard from Mr. Fears on a number of times over the years, as a traffic engineer, I'd like to place his credentials on the record and ask that you accept him in that area of expertise. Mr. Fears, if you could briefly share with us your professional educational background?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Newark College of Engineering. I spent 15 years at Somerset County as the, in the Highway Design Section. 12 of those years, I was the county traffic engineer. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. I'm a fellow in the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Mr. Fears will accept, I know Mr. Fears has been before this board before, so we'll accept this credential.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Fears, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions with regard to the traffic design. First, you heard Mr. DeFalco opine, as a professional engineer, that the ingress and egress on Route 9 as currently designed is both superior and safer than the current access system that's in place. Do you share that professional opinion?
I do.
And with regard to the parking fields, are you comfortable that the parking fields that are shown on this plan are adequate to park all anticipated activity that would come from the new Walgreens at the bank?
Yes, I'm very comfortable with that.
One of the comments that the Environmental Commission made to us when we were in front of them was that as a policy, they encouraged applicants to, this was speaking to us as we stood before them, they said, as a policy, they encourage applicants at all times to try to green-bank parking wherever possible. Even if the ordinance pushed it to a certain number, if you thought a lesser number was correct, to share that with the board and green-bank that. And we went back and we looked at this. And in this instance, green banking of parking, we don't believe is appropriate, because we are sharing our parking fields with the bowling facility. And the bowling facility does have high activities at isolated times, and so the thought of taking some of the parking off of the project and green-banking it, although a noble one, we're just not comfortable, is applicable to the site. And although it's me speaking, I asked Mr. Fears, Mr. Fears was the one who did the analysis for us, Mr. Fears, is that an accurate analysis of the parking field design as it's presented to the board?
Yes, it is.
Most important is the circulation that is shown on-site. Are you comfortable that the circulation has been properly designed and that the appropriate turning radii, and the templates for, that would show the appropriate turning radii, will fit on this plan for all anticipated vehicles, emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles, and trash removal vehicles, as well as the traveling public?
Yes, I am. We assessed the site for movement through all portions of the site for various classes of vehicles, and the largest vehicle anticipated is a tractor-trailer truck. The anticipated routing for a tractor-trailer truck would place it traveling on the one-way aisle between the bank and the Walgreens building, and the key area there is the left turn into that aisle, and then the left turn out at the end, and it can satisfactorily clear both of those movements. All other portions of the site are relatively standard in terms of geometry and dimensions, and should work well.
So from an access perspective, a parking perspective, and a circulation perspective, you as the professional traffic engineer participated in all of those designs, and is it appropriate to say, in your summary, is that it is adequate in all of those categories?
Absolutely.
Earlier, you heard my description of the traffic calming devices and Mr. DeFalco's description of traffic calming devices that were introduced to slow down traffic on the central corridor roadway of the parking lot. From your professional perspective as a traffic engineer, are those appropriate methods of calming traffic, and do you believe that they will be effective as Mr. DeFalco has described them?
I believe for this particular site, they are appropriate. They do have the effect of calming traffic movements. The most effective devices would be the pedestrian tables, and there are three of them. One is located at a point opposite the access to Route 9. One is located at the crosswalk moving toward Fort Plains, and one is located at the corner of the Walgreens building where one would move behind the building. The change in grade associated with them can be smoothly negotiated by service and emergency service vehicles. But for a passenger car, even though it doesn't cause loss of control, it feels somewhat uncomfortable if you take it too fast. And for that reason, they are effective. The rumble strips, there are four of them proposed in the aisle between the bowling alley and the Walgreens, and their primary effect is to increase alertness on the part of drivers. They generate sound. They don't change your ability to control at all, but the external sound definitely raises your attention level. These are commonly used at approaches to toll booths on-- These are commonly used at approaches to toll booths on toll roads and so forth where you have very high-speed, high-volume conditions and they're effective in reducing vehicle speeds.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have nothing further of Mr. Fears. He is available for your examination at this time if you wish to.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. On the entrance to Route 9, you have walking pedestrians, let's say, coming from the bus stop and they want to walk into the site from Route 9. You propose any crosswalks to the entrance of the store?
We haven't put crosswalks on the plans, but there would be a pedestrian table that crosses a portion of the aisle. So pedestrians coming from the bus stop would presumably walk along Route 9 and then cross the driveway toward the bowling alley and then cross toward the site.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question, Mr. Chair. Regarding the back of the Walgreens, if a tractor-trailer was not able to take that left turn into the loading area and did not make it appropriately, would they be able to go straight through and get out the other way?
The aisle width there is physically able to accommodate them, yes, but...
That's preferable, I'm just, I just...
It's, the tough part of that turn would come right at the end of the canopy, but they have a substantial distance from the corner of the canopy out to the first internal conflict point that would give them substantial room for the swing of the left rear tire. That would be the critical tire in terms of that movement.
So that's, if there's a Plan B, if they're not, if they don't go through the central one and are forced to go around there, can they still get out?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, logically speaking, if you were to look at this, if someone was not able to, you know, miss the turn, I just wanted to make sure that there was a safe way for them to get out, I think that's a possibility.
We've tried very hard to avoid any, oh, no, spots.
They still do happen, yeah.
There are escapes and alternatives designed into every aspect of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a couple of things from Mr. Fears.
Sure.
Tractor-trailer deliveries between Walgreens and the bank, if they come back and parallel park to the covered enclosure, they still have adequate ability to maneuver out of the covered enclosure, make all the movements we've spoken about this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you give us just a couple of seconds of testimony about site distances along the road frontages as it relates to the new access points, please?
In the vicinity of the site, if you're coming out onto Fort Plains Road, looking to the left, the roadway is straight, the grades are relatively uniform, so your site distance there is satisfactory and pretty much typical. If you're looking toward the right, you are on the outside of the curve and as you know, that provides the maximum or the ideal site distance configuration. So the site distance on Fort Plains Road is excellent. The site distance on Route 9 is affected by the fact that Route 9 is a much higher-speed roadway and the only compromising factor there would be if there were a bus stopped at the bus stop located to the north. That bus could compromise your view of approaching traffic. Balancing that is the full-width shoulder that exists along the roadway. And if you watch the way people use the access points to Route 9, while that shoulder is not designed or intended to be a standard acceleration lane, it is very commonly used to ease a right turn from a driveway onto Route 9 and give it a little bit of acceleration area to move smoothly into the lane. In the event that a bus were stopped so that visibility were compromised, that is how I expect drivers would use the driveway.
Thank you. Mr. Page, Mr. Fears, we've had a number of technical review committee meetings and my memory starts to fail me. I can't remember some of the things that are in our report, if they've been agreed to at our subsequent, at our previous meetings or if you've given testimony about them. As it relates to physical improvements along Fort Plains Road, in our report dated May 8, 2008, on page six, it was agreed that the determination of the need for improvements along Fort Plains Road would be deferred to the township engineer.
Correct.
I just need to know that that's one on the record, two in Ron's resolution, so that three, we don't have a problem in the engineering department, they look at us like we didn't do our job.
No problem.
I have no additional comments or questions from Mr. Fears, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And the applicant so stipulates that, we did discuss what would be the appropriate improvements to Fort Plains Road. There is a somewhat unusual condition where the right-of-way is exceptionally wide as you go to the north, that's all right-of-way in there. And how the township engineer wants the improvements or whether he wants improvements in there is up for his determination. We agreed that we would abide by that decision.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the concerns was that there's new housing across the street which may have performance guarantees for road widening which may or may not be done, Linda Lane Apartments across the streets before the zoning board to rehab those old units. So they would have some proportionate share to improvements along the area. And since it's, there are active land development applications and construction projects from Burgerville Road south to Linda Lane at different boards and in different stages of progress, we felt it was prudent to leave it to the township engineer to determine how to fit the puzzle pieces together, but at least have the understanding that if they're necessary, the applicants are responsible for them.
Absolutely.
And that decision with the township engineer, whether you're actually going to do it or put a pro-rata contribution towards it, is going to be memorialized in the developer's agreement?
Sure. That's probably, that's an appropriate vehicle, sure.
Yeah.
Mark, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Page, any more testimony?
Very briefly, our architect will provide you with what we know is important testimony that the design standards, the spirit and letter of the design standards have been met. So if I could call our architect, this is Mr. Anthony Sirizati of the Bannock Group and it is his firm that's responsible for the attractive building that is presented to you. Mr. Sirizati, if you could be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Anthony Sirizati, S-I-R-I-Z-Z-O-T-T-I.
Mr. Sirizati, if you could share with the board your professional and educational background as an architect?
I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from the New York Institute of Technology in New York. I've been a licensed architect...
Did Mike the phone up?
I've been a licensed architect since 1983 in the state of New Jersey. I'm currently the Vice President of Architecture for the Bannock Group located in Cherry Hill.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sirizati, I'm going to ask if you could introduce the colored rendering of your firm's plans to the board. We're at what exhibit?
Mr. Cucero? We are at, this will be A14.
So A14, this building represents the Walgreens proposed for this site. It's 14,820 square feet. It's a masonry wall building. Walgreens believes very strongly that they believe in a quality building, aesthetically
pleasing. The building is brick with a limestone, limestone sign band and the front entrance feature is a 27 and 28-foot-high entrance with a glass canopy that's lit up to give you a very good sense of where the entrance is. The finishes of the building are on all four sides of the building. And we have a nice articulation, there's a base, there's a baseline of rusticated stone brick and then we introduce another belt course that runs around the top of the building to break up that overall size of the wall. The standard wall is about 22 feet in height.
And Mr. Sirizati, as part of designing this building, your firm was, had the opportunity to review the design standards that Howell Township memorialized in an ordinance a few years ago. And are you comfortable sharing with the board that both the spirit and the letter of those design standards are met? If you could just go through a couple of the points where they are embraced in the design?
Absolutely. Walgreens happens to have very similar standards. Your standards basically ask for a base course, a wall finish, and a top cornice. We've clearly done that in these elevations. We've got a variety of finishes, but limited to a very simple palette that gives us very clear articulation of the different building parts. There's a nice textural and color quality between the base masonry and the smooth-faced limestone around the signage. All in all, it is trying to be a friendly neighbor in its environment.
Now, I have a question, Mr. Sirizati. I don't see, maybe you're not responsible for that, but what about the architecturals for the bank? Will it be similar to the Walgreens, is it a different?
Mr. Vizloki, when we began, and I know that was a while ago, but when we began, we asked the board to consider a preliminary site plan for both buildings and a final for Walgreens and that we would return with the bank building. And the reason is that we do not have a bank to identify to you as a tenant. We believe that we will have one shortly, but we do not have the final architecture. We recognize the responsibility of having the same high-quality architecture and a compatibility, but we're asking the board to consider the Walgreens final and a bank as preliminary only.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have nothing further of Mr. Sirizati. He is available for the examination of the board and your professionals at this time.
Board members, professionals, any questions, comments?
I do have one, Chairman. The air conditioning units, I had a comment D for architectural comments, how are they going to be screened?
The process we're using, we've raised the height of the parapets. We've taken, we've studied the angle of view. We're pretty confident that the units will be screened from the general population.
Okay.
The perimeter walls are higher than the...
I'm sorry, that's a technical term. The perimeter walls are higher than the roof, sufficient to screen the HVAC equipment.
Want to use fenestration?
Mr. Sirizati?
Yes.
My eyes are bad.
That's okay.
The drive-through pharmacy, what's the height?
The drive-through pharmacy at the lower, the lower edge is 12 feet.
It's 12?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, in our report, there's a community design standard that talks about no wall having a blank uninterrupted length exceeding 50 feet without revealed pilaster, change in texture, all that sort of stuff. Can you just simply testify if you comply with that section of the ordinance or not so that the record's clear as to whether or not the application requires relief?
Yes, sir, I believe we do. We've got, all four sides of the building are treated the same. We've got a rusticated masonry base, then it goes to the brick. We've added the, a band around the top to articulate the wall finishes and in most cases there is an architectural feature. On one side, we have the drive-through feature. On the back receiving side, we have the receiving and fencing areas that create some interest to the back of the, back of the building.
So, Mr. Page, it's reasonable to say that the applicant's complying with the community design standards as it relates to the architecture of the Walgreens building?
That would be in my summation, I would say that we, it was our intention to and that we have.
Thank you. Any discussion on building signage, facade signage?
The, only to indicate that the facade signage as shown on the plans is the request and that it is designed to be less than that which is permitted by the ordinance for facade treatment. There are two signs for the two facades that are visible from the roadway.
That would be facing the wall now?
Facing the, yes, yes. It would be facing the, we would be looking to orient it towards traffic traveling on Route 9, but yes, it would be on that face as well as the true front.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of questions. So now, we're kind of looking at what could be a phasing plan on the site. There is, just so the board is clear, it's the possibility that, you know, if you have trouble finding a bank, the Walgreens gets built and the other portion of this, you know, is not built for a while. But I just want to understand, with part of, with the Walgreens preliminary, the only thing that's not, that feasibly could not be built is going to be the bank, but there are other improvements, you know, is the parking going to be out there?
Everything that is shown on the plan but the building and the building would be maintained as a lawn area until there is a bank, but all of the improvements would be the first phase.
Good answer.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I'm just a little confused. Are we going to go through the sheet?
What sheet's that, sir?
CME's reports and...
If your engineer wants us to go through specific points, we certainly will.
Was there any points that you, there was a question or we needed to hear more testimony about?
Well, we don't normally do it that way. If you want me to take the time to go through it or the applicant can, otherwise as a report, Ron's going to give them relief from all the sections that we don't say we don't need relief from. So I'm not sure, if you want it to be our job, we're happy to do it.
I'd like them to go through the report and the whole, the entire report?
Sure.
Well, if whatever, just, I think the things that were discussed are already there, but I think there was some stuff in Ernie's report that, unless you have no objections to the report at all.
That's what I had him...
On the record, no objection to it.
No objections to any statements afterwards, so you're going to comply with everything Ernie and CME has recommended in their report?
This, we have been with them for months, working on this with them for months and that's why I made a point of having Mr. DeFalco before he sat down, I do need to call him again because he's going to present the pylon sign to, but before he sat down the first time, I asked him that question. All specifications, all technical recommendations, all details as set forth in the professional reports and on the record, he indicated there is no issue.
And Ernie, you take no objections to that, correct?
That's the technical report. The cover letter of our report lists all the waivers and variances that were necessary. We've gone through some of these and they said, we don't need them. And I don't know how to keep score here, so to speak.
All right.
So if the applicant wants them, we should talk about it. If he's complied with them, we don't need them. Which is, what date is the last date? CME reports May 2008. No.
With the chair's permission, before we go through the waivers, we have some, a short amount of additional direct testimony with regard to the pylon sign.
Okay.
I'd like to present that sign to you and then we'll go through the waiver request. Mr. DeFalco, if you could identify on your plans where the freestanding sign location is proposed and then if you could on our architect's plans, show the board the actual design of that sign and let's talk about the relief that the applicant will request for that sign.
Yes, the pylon sign is located in the Green Island, south of the exiting movement on Route 9. And the architect shows it on his exhibit that was just introduced in the upper right corner. The Walgreens logo on top and beneath that is the, is the reader board.
And if you could identify the size of that sign and then identify the variance relief that our applicant is requesting for the sign.
The sign is eight feet, eight inches wide at the top. It is 20, I think it's 24 feet tall, is that correct?
Do you have the actual...
Oh, 25, 25 feet tall. The area of the sign is, of the upper sign is 89.9 square feet. The reader board is 40... The parking for the bowling is right on the right-of-way line. We have the bowling alley sign, which exists, which is not going to be changed, but that is also an elevated pylon sign, about 18 feet tall. The bus stop is centered right on the bowling alley frontage. Between the parking and the parking lot, the pylon sign for the bowling alley and the bus parking, a higher sign affords somebody coming to the site the ability to see the sign and know to slow down to turn prior to passing the sign. The sign is after the driveway, so someone has to see the sign before they get to the site and be able to slow enough to pull into the driveway.
The ordinance which recommends the monument-style sign would require a sign that would not be visible at all if a bus were located at the bus stop. Is that accurate?
That's my opinion, yes.
The reader board element is a request to have, it's a non-flashing, it's not a moving electric sign, but it's an opportunity to have a sign that changes with some frequency, identifying specials that are available, but it would be done in fixed letters. It would not be a scrolling sign.
Not scrolling, not blinking, that's correct.
And the applicant is requesting, with regard to the location of the sign, is the sign located outside of the site triangles?
Yes, it is.
And is the sign located, what is the setback from the Route 9 right-of-way?
The setback from the Route 9 is 10.9 feet, where I think 15 feet is required.
And in fact, if it were 15 feet, it would not be in the greenway, it would be in the driveway.
In the driveway, yes.
So, in summary, the applicant is asking for permission to have a sign that is on a pole rather than a monument, that is approximately 10 feet rather than 15 feet, and the size of the faces of the sign exceeds that which is permitted by the ordinance.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, that is the applicant's request for identification signage.
What I'd like us to do is to go through the CME report, starting on page 3, 5, and section, 5A, and through all the non-conformities, the variances.
We're ready.
And can you give testimony to those effects?
Sure.
Some, I think the testimony is there.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just before we move on, I have one question. Does the board want that as a condition, that there's not going to be any scrolling or blinking on the reader sign?
Yes.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to touch on the sign a little bit more, because, I don't know, we're bouncing around more than I'm used to. Mr. DeFalco, in our ordinance, our design standards calls for monument. A, can you tell us why you can't comply to the monument sign? B, what can you do to make it more conforming to a monument sign?
Well, the monument sign is very low to the ground. In our situation, a low sign is not going to be visible, so the whole premise of a monument sign being appropriate for the highway usage in our specific case doesn't work with us, because we need the visibility from a distance.
Not all monument signs have to be low. So, when these designs ordinances were designed, obviously, the people who proposed these design standards knew that, you know, signs were going to be on Route 9, so-
The height of the sign in the ordinance is 10 or 12 feet maximum.
Okay, let me ask you a question. The other Walgreens on Lanes Mills, their signage is not on a pole. It's, I believe, skirted with brick.
They have a, they have a pylon sign.
They do. But it's not on a pole?
Oh, oh.
Oh, you mean the support of the-
Correct.
We could, if we could easily introduce the architectural elements of the building as a skirt to the pole.
Like a masonry sign with-
Very easy.
I understand what you're saying now.
Right, that's my point.
Got it.
Thank you.
And just for clarification for both sides here, that adds to the Howell Township definition of sign area. So theoretically, we're giving them a bigger sign, but based upon the testimony we've had here this evening, we're not happy about it being just a pole, so the decorative feature unfortunately counts as sign area. We're not giving them necessarily a bigger sign. We're asking them to architecturally enhance what's proposed as a pole sign.
I'm comfortable with that, Mr. Chair.
So, if it matches the building's brick and the stone and the look of the building?
We can either ask the architect to introduce some of the feature elements that are on the building as features in the masonry treatment. I just want to do one-
Mr. Fears, not in the site triangle, not creating any-
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I'm prepared, if, with your permission, to go through-
CME report, please.
I'm going to offer a method, I'll offer, where I believe the testimony's on the record, I'll so say, to move along.
Yes.
Slow me down or stop me on any of them. Section 188-106B, all loading areas and parking lots with more than 10 spaces-
Ken, if I could slow you down, real quick. 5, A, B, C, D, E, all pertaining to the bowling alley. Now, it's proposed at this time, the application for the Walgreens is not doing any improvements to the bowling alley?
Yeah, but you're, but you're presenting it as one lot or two lots.
Right, I understand that.
This is a new application, I mean, you know.
Our offer with regard to the parking facility that is associated with the bowling alley, we're asking that it be allowed to remain as designed, with the exception that we are introducing a controlled access point to Route 9 and reducing the total number of entrances. The five items that Mr. DeFalco just cut me off from reading are all related to the bowling alley, and we would ask for the technical waivers required for those conditions to continue.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, I'm sorry. I think this board has a great opportunity to bring this property a little bit more conforming. I don't know how much details they're going to propose on the bowling alley, but I think that's a great opportunity for us now to really address these issues with the bowling alley site. I mean, compared to what's coming and what's there now, I think there's some things that need to be addressed.
I'm surprised that the facade of the bowling alley is not being revamped to match up with this, this whole new, I mean, it's a chance, you're presenting this as one whole entire project. I don't understand why this is not being, the whole site not being revamped and revised.
To clarify, we began by introducing the entire site to the board because the two property owners may, reached an agreement to do a new minor subdivision lot line. That's the very first thing that we present to you. Once that subdivision is created, you now have a request to, by the applicant, to improve the new lot that's created and to make certain that there was cross-parking and cross-circulation with the adjacent property. The developing property offered two things to the bowling facility. The bowling facility's not your applicant.
Right.
But as part and parcel of negotiating that minor subdivision, we're handling stormwater and we're bringing utilities to that building, and we're changing the access. But that's a big building and a big site, and that's not, that building and that site's not before you as an applicant.
I could understand maybe the building, but you don't propose any new overlay on the bowling alley. You have a brand-new building coming in with new directions, new lines, much newer asphalt. There's no proposal on any overlay on the bowling alley, no restructuring to blend in with the traffic pattern that's going on to the Walgreens. I mean, I could go on sidewalks, a long down, you have a bus stop on Route 9 that people could walk to the Walgreens, yet you're not proposing any new sidewalks down by the bowling alley. I mean, isn't that all into play?
Respect, I don't think that it is.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask counsel about that, regarding what Mr. Pape described, that we're looking at an application for development of the subdivided lot as newly created. Do we have, are we going in the right direction here? Do we have jurisdiction to start asking questions with respect to the bowling alley?
Well, I was just talking to our engineer about that. The way I understand, the bowling alley is definitely part of the application. They made it part of the application. The shared parking that they have actually isn't needed by the Walgreens. The shared parking helps the bowling alley to achieve its parking requirement. Mr. Pape, are there any other improvements on the bowling alley portion that serve the Walgreens?
There's the new driveway, central driveway, and then between the buildings is all being redone, and we've offered to landscape all along the backside of the building.
I think, and that, what you've heard from Mr. Pape is pretty much the narrow jurisdiction this board has, is to deal with improvements that flow from that part of the project where Walgreens is using the property. In terms of facade on the bowling alley and things like that, that's beyond the board's jurisdiction. There's no improvements to the building that are, that are being proposed.
Mr. Chairman, considering the major utility improvement with stormwater management and the sewer ring that's taking place, not just on the Walgreens property, but also adjacent on the bowling alley, I feel really good about, you know, this whole application, because that is something that is gravely needed on both of these pieces of property that are sitting over here in front of us right now.
Can we go into section 6?
Mr. Chair, just, I'm sorry, please. Ron, so, I understand the building aspect, but does that touch on the overlay of the parking lot?
Well, as I said, I think for those areas that they're using, you know, to get to the Route 9, the new improvements they're putting on the bowling alley property, that's definitely, you know, something that this board can evaluate. I think to say, you know, if there's some portion of the parking lot that is not implicated by what's happening on the Walgreens property and is not part of what the improvements are, as Ernie's indicated, those are pre-existing conditions, not really part of, you know, what's being developed. Maybe I can say this, the applicant made good efforts to make sure that the Walgreens was sort of a standalone facility. Where they put the subdivision line allows for Walgreens to have the access to Fort Plains and the access to Route 9. And from that perspective, the subdivision's going to create two new owners, the owner of the bowling alley on a smaller lot and the owner of the Walgreens on a new lot. And so, from that perspective, I don't know that there was ever an intent necessarily to go back in and rehabilitate portions of the bowling alley site. But again, you guys get the big bucks to sit up there, you can certainly ask the question, but I'm not sure, as we search through what the requirements of the ordinance or applicable law are, that they're required to do that.
I think that's definitely correct, and I think, like I said before, it's the improvements that they're putting through that have to do with the Walgreens, and also, if you feel there's some section of this where the non-conformity is being intensified by the reduction in the size of the lot, then I think you can, you can definitely address that as well.
Any other board members? Can we move on to the variances here?
Well, Mr. Chair, did we resolve Mr. DeCastro's?
Well, if he has, from what I was gathered, we don't really have jurisdiction unless it's part of where the Walgreens improvements are in direct correlation with the bowling alley.
Or where the non-conformities are being intensified or impacted somehow by the reduction in the size of the lot.
Well, I would think just the mere fact that they're sharing the parking lot, you know, if you're going to go from Walgreens into the bowling alley or the bowling alley into Walgreens, that would be part of a-
We offer that, because shared parking says that you can go back and forth, but as your professionals indicated, as Mr. Fears' traffic report indicates, and as Mr. DeFalco indicated, we have more than enough parking for the Walgreens on our site, more than enough. And in fact, we could greenbank a number of parking stalls but for the fact that we are providing additional parking for the bowling facility. So politely, we're not putting a burden on the bowling facility, we're providing an opportunity for the bowling facility to have a greater viability.
You're making an existing non-conformity more conforming, so.
And similarly, when we look at these five points, three of them deal with loading zones, and clearly, a loading zone would not be introduced to a bowling alley, you don't need one. One asks that there be additional landscaping, and as Mr. DeFalco pointed out, there is considerable landscaping along the side of the bowling alley, none of which is there now, that's being offered. So that's, although technically may not be exactly what the landscaping would have been if we were to put it in the parking field, it is considerable. And the, really, the only, the only true waiver is that we're not putting islands every 10 parking stalls in the bowling alley. There's nothing in there that would have asked for a resurfaced parking lot.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir.
When this, when this project is finished, as far as parking goes, I'm looking at this plan, and I see a lot more parking coming, forgetting the Walgreens parking lot. Once that's built, I see the back of the bowling alley being turned into a bigger parking lot yet. So I don't believe there's any overflow from the bowling alley that we'd have to worry about going into Walgreens parking lot. I'm looking at, I'll bet you 40 parking spaces in the back of that bowling alley. And I'm very familiar with that piece of property, and trying to visualize once everything is done and assessed pools are gone and the trees are up and asphalt's down, I know the back of that bowling alley will be a parking lot. There's nothing else it could be used for, and I see plenty of parking there, more than adequate as there is next door.
Mr. Tanto, your familiarity with the building might be greater than mine, I don't disagree that that's a very realistic possibility. Currently, there are underground utilities there, the well and the septic, which prevented that from occurring. When those are removed, that may occur. Certainly, it would require the blessing of this board for that to occur, and that would require someone to come before you. But in the interim, we recognize that there is a need for parking, and the Walgreens facility can accommodate additional parking demand if it's created by the bowling alley. And the bowling alley is a healthy business in town, as you're all aware, and additional parking for it is a benefit.
Okay. 6, may we?
6A and-
6A, these, there was direct testimony on these when we presented the minor subdivision. Because the lot line that we're asking the board to consider goes down between the two buildings, although it's interior, it's not out on the side, it will require these technical variances, just because of where the lot line goes down. The impervious coverage calculation pointing out that there is a minor violation of the impervious coverage requirement, we addressed that on the record. The ordinance says 70 percent, 5301 would be at 78 percent, and 52.03 would be at 72 percent. With the stormwater system that we're introducing, we're comfortable asking that you consider that to be mitigation for that additional impervious.
One other comment on that, too, is that if you look at the right-of-way of Fort Plains Road, in reality, if this was a true right-of-way that followed the pavement, there's 10,000 square feet of property that's situated between what the right-of-way would be normally and this existing property line. That would give us 70 percent, just from a planning point of view. 70 percent exists out there. The fact that it's not on our property per se, but the lot has 70 percent coverage if you consider it from a planning point of view as a 70 percent for the area of the town, not per se on that property, but from street to street, it's 70 percent, if you understand what I'm saying.
It was also brought to our attention, and we spoke to this when presenting the subdivision, that a 50-foot wide buffer is required along the rear of this property because there are residential structures across the street. We pointed out, one, that on our site, we have more than 50 feet of landscaping, considerably more, and the waiver is requested for that portion that is behind the bowling alley, and it's an existing condition. But again, that exceptionally wide right-of-way that we can't claim title to creates an effective 50-foot buffer. But it's not on our property, and it's not- That would give us 70 percent, just from a planning point of view. 70 percent exists out there. The fact that it's not on our property per se, but the lot has 70 percent coverage if you consider it from a planning point of view as a 70 percent for the area of the town, not per se on that property, but from street to street, it's 70 percent, if you understand what I'm saying.
It was also brought to our attention, and we spoke to this when presenting the subdivision, that a 50-foot wide buffer is required along the rear of this property because there are residential structures across the street. We pointed out, one, that on our site, we have more than 50 feet of landscaping, considerably more, and the waiver is requested for that portion that is behind the bowling alley, and it's an existing condition. But again, that exceptionally wide right-of-way that we can't claim title to creates an effective 50-foot buffer. But it's not on our property, and it's not being created by this application. With regard to the minimum number of parking spaces required for a bowling alley of 128, and we've counted that there are 104, we're pointing out that that technical deficiency, we ask that you consider the shared parking on the Walgreens facility, which would not have a coincidental peak activity, be treated as addressing that requirement.
Mr. Pape, you're relocating the dumpster enclosure on the bowling alley.
That's correct.
Is that going to affect those parking spots that are in front of the dumpster?
No, because the pickup isn't done when there's people using the parking lot. It's all during early morning hours typically. And those are the furthest spaces from the door. Those would be the last ones to be used.
The number nine, speaks to parking spaces shall not have direct access from a public street or a major interior drive. The parking for the bowling alley, the would-be on what is a central drive, we are comfortable that with the traffic calming devices that are introduced, that that road will function safely, and we're asking for a design waiver for that. All loading areas and parking lots with more than 10 spaces shall be buffered from adjoining streets, existing residential uses, and residential zone districts, I think is the explanation of that section of the ordinance. The next, all aisles other than the main drives into a commercial and/or industrial area shall be a minimum of 25 feet wide, a 12-foot wide...
It's really 18 now, 18-foot wide.
Shall be a minimum of...
It's striped for 12, but there's 18 feet of pavement.
The ordinance calls for interior aisles to be 25, and we have an 18-foot wide one-way drive aisle. Where 25 is the standard, we're asking for where we have a one-way aisle that you accept 18. Mr. DeFalco, are you comfortable indicating that an 18-foot wide one-way aisle is a safe aisle and will function properly?
Yes, it's just the exiting movement to the south of the bank building, that's what that's for. It's the bypass lane of the bank lane and also the exiting movement for the Walgreens drive-through. And the same paragraph, the 24-foot aisle, Mr. Fears, I think testified to that point through his report, that the 24-foot wide aisle behind the building is adequate for the 90-degree parking.
So that's a one-foot design waiver request?
That's correct.
If you could take us through the next one. Provide a minimum five-foot tall buffer around the proposed trash enclosure to obscure views from the parking area, streets, and residences. What is the treatment that you offer?
Well, first of all, the trash enclosure is between the buildings, so it's not visible from the north or the south. It's not visible from the west because of its distance from the street and the residence. There is a buffer to the west of it, and from Route 9, it is fenced in. There is a wooden fence surrounding the entire trash enclosure, and it's not visible.
Respectfully requesting that design waiver. Parking lot shall be placed to the rear of buildings or the side if the rear is not feasible, and parking is proposed along Route 9. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we respectfully ask that you consider the parking in its totality. There is parking, we're lining our parking up with existing parking from the bowling facility. I don't think it's going to create an unattractive element, certainly creates a safe parking lot. We're asking for the design waiver on that element. Curbing shall be granite or equivalent concrete curb and gutter as indicated on Lot 52.03, and the board should determine whether concrete curb and gutter as proposed is a granite equivalent. We're asking for this facility, that we be permitted to use concrete curbs. That's the ultimate determination to be made by this board. We're comfortable that, from an aesthetic, that...
The curb and gutter is being used because the gutter portion allows a flatter slope. It improves the flow of drainage against the gutter. If we use the Belgium block curb and some of the slopes that are existing along the highway edge and along the back of the building, you need to increase the slope and you need to put additional storm sewer catch basins in. The way we have it designed, it's a very gentle slope, adequately handled by a concrete gutter, which can be built to a flatter slope than a pavement can.
Does any, what do we have in the existing Walgreens? Is that concrete or granite? Anybody know?
No.
I'd like to be consistent. I mean, I understand some design waivers are, you know, understandable, but...
If granite pleases the board, our client has no problem with granite. It's really your call.
I'm in preference of the granite, Mr. Chairman.
It's your call.
All right, granite.
The next one talks about the walkways, I think primarily talking about the walkways along the road frontages. With regard to Fort Plains Road, our agreement is a blanket, we'll agree with the improvements of Fort Plains Road and to participate as directed by the township's engineer. And if sidewalks are part of that, then sidewalks are part of that. We're not, with a tail, not the dog. And as far as along Route 9, we're asking that to be relieved of that obligation, but again, we look to you as to whether you find sidewalks along that section of Route 9 to be appropriate. Mr. DeFalco, if sidewalks were directed, could you design a sidewalk into the green belt that's available?
Yes, we could.
So that's your call.
I'd like to see sidewalks.
I'd concur, and I'd like to see go all the way down to the bowling alley, at least to the bus stop. It could only be healthy to your, to the applicant when people want to walk there.
The only reason why I think sidewalks would be applicable is because of the bus stop in that particular area. And it would help facilitate people walking along Route 9. I don't know, you know, where they're going to go, either to the Walgreens or the bank or to the storage facility, but it might be advantageous at this point to have a sidewalk. The only reason being because of the bus stop. That would be the only thing that would lead me towards that.
I have an applicant that is willing to put in sidewalks, and not going to argue with her. I believe that if we were to have sidewalks along that portion of the highway where the bus passengers exit, and if we were then to end it at our central driveway so that they are then directed internally instead of walking along the highway, there's really no place to go if they're walking along the highway.
And the reason I say this is because if you look at the drug fair that's right here on Route 9 by Aldrich Road and corner of Aldrich Road and Route 9, there's the drug fair, the...
Sure.
If you look at that shopping center, there's a bus stop there, there's a sidewalk that runs right along there, so...
Would you like to see it all the way to the end of our property or along the portion where the bus stop is and then turning it internally?
I'd like to turn, I'd want to get them all inside so they go shopping.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Right now, that bus stop is in front of the bowling alley. It's probably 150 foot from that driveway. What happens if we approach New Jersey Transit to move the bus stop south of that driveway? Well, if there's a concrete platform already there, I don't think they're going to want the additional expense to put in another concrete platform and move their canopy.
Oh, I don't, I don't know about that. I've seen them on Aldrich Road on the corner, right off the golf station, move it pretty easy. I mean, the owner there just had it...
That's right.
It was a simple request. If, as Ms. Dolan would like to have, a sidewalk all in that green belt, correct?
I think it would be safer to have the bus stop down there than where it is now. Right now, where it is, it's fine because they're not going in.
And then apply, we'll move the bus stop over as well.
Mr. Chair, we can't make, yeah, if we can't move the bus stop, that's not within our jurisdiction.
No, we can't. The only thing is that they could request New Jersey Transit if they would move it, but I don't know if we can make that a condition, we couldn't.
Then I could, I would suggest that your governing body may want to make that. They'll listen to your governing body, they're not going to listen to an applicant say, "Move your bus stop."
But I'm not even sure. I mean, we're having a conversation, I don't think any of us are even qualified to discuss whether or not, from a traffic and safety perspective, that bus stop was put there for a reason, and I'm not even going to speculate. But I will say, as far as sidewalks, that's one area of the design standards where I really do feel there is a compelling reason to bring everybody on board because it's a building block, you know, because you don't want to put them there, then the next, you know, when next door in the storage facility comes before us again someday to redo something, they say, "Well, there's none over there by Walgreens, so why are we going to build a sidewalk to nowhere?" We have to build sidewalks to nowhere because eventually they're all going to lead to somewhere, and I would like to see the whole entire thing sidewalk.
And who's to say that storage facility doesn't become a shopping center? You know, so I mean, I think it's advantageous to take advantage of that.
We, before we began this presentation, as we reviewed all of the comments, Councilwoman Dalton, we anticipated that sidewalks were very important to the members of the board, and it doesn't surprise us that you're asking for it. Every one of the improvements that we're putting on cost our client money, and we're observing that you're being very respectful of the applicant, the answer is yes. So if you would like sidewalk along the full road, you've got it.
You're the first lawyer that said yes to me today.
H, I think we're up to...
H. Again, this is talking about the parking in the front yard, and we need, we're asking that we be permitted to have it there. Next, a minimum of one deciduous shade tree shall be planted in the parking lot for every five parking spaces with a six-square foot planter. We're asking that the landscaping plan, the specific landscaping plan that we've shown you, which actually is responsive to the specific technical requirements of the shade tree expert, be accepted. We have not put parking, we've not put shade trees throughout the parking lot, but we have considerable landscaping on site.
So you're saying a certified tree expert has approved your landscape?
The other way around. We read her report and amended the report, the plan to match what she asked us to, and we agree that we will, that, we agree that we have to match what she's asked us.
Okay.
We're, along each street line, a five-foot wide strip shall be available for landscaping. It points out that approximately four feet is proposed along Route 9 and zero feet along for Lot 53.01, and I'm going to point out that's essentially the area where we're going to put sidewalks. So it would be even a little bit less than that so that we can accommodate the sidewalk. The next, there's no walls, have a blank uninterrupted length exceeding 50 feet without including revealed pilaster change in texture, color. Our architect went through all four sides of the building, and it's his testimony that there, this is, this 50-foot uninterrupted area does not exist on the building, and that is our obligation. The next is talking about the pole signs, we've asked for the sign as presented. The next talks about the monument base ground sign shall not be greater than 12 feet by three feet or four feet by 10 feet excluding the base. And the monument sign proposed on Lot 52.03 along Fort Plains Road is proposed to be at six feet long by four feet high excluding the base. I'm comfortable, we can modify our monument sign in the back to conform. That's the secondary sign on the back of the building. I think the last, a minimum 10-foot clearance from all property lines to a freestanding sign is required, plus or minus two feet appears provided for the existing bowling alley sign. That's the bowling alley sign that is on their property, we're not touching that in light of the fact that we're asking for a subdivision that property's before you. We ask that you reaffirm that bulk variance that exists for that sign. We're not making any changes to it. I believe that is your variances and waivers. Is any further?
I think there was some other stuff to read. It says the status of your NJ DOT review.
We're filed.
We're filed.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, under, under comment 10, you can go over to page seven. I think they've testified to everything under comment 10 except for comments N, O, and Q on page seven, and then the last two items on page eight.
Okay, you can address those.
Okay, number, letter N on page seven is the need for a temporary construction easement from adjoining Lot 50. That's the public storage building for the construction of the retaining wall. We've placed a wall a foot clear of the property line, the wall is a gravity wall. We don't think we need any easements from that property, we'll build it from the back. So there'll be a finished side, and we'll build everything from the Walgreens side of the property boundary. We don't think we have to go on the other property to do any work. We're matching grade. It's not a very high wall, it's not a very complicated procedure. With regard to O, the dirt driveway encroachment on adjacent Lot 51, that's the single-family 75-foot square lot that is located at the bottom right of our property, which on the renderings that you have, there is a driveway encroachment. And it's our intention to, to work with that property owner to come to a agreement on either granting of an easement for the continuation of that encroachment or the request to remove it.
I think it's important to note that although it's an encroachment, it does not affect the design or the function of Mr. DeFalco's plan.
Wait, just going back to the encroachment, so there's a little area of this property that has some...
Our neighbor's, our neighbor's driveway's going over our property.
So, and that's going to stay?
We'll meet with them to try to memorialize some legal solution for it, but probably...
Well, I just want to incorporate that into the resolution.
It'll probably stay.
So you're going to provide us with a copy of whatever easement that you work out with them, or if it's a, you know, quick claim, or whatever it is.
You got it.
Whatever legal document that's executed, you're going to give to us.
No problem.
Okay.
The last letter, Ernie?
Q. Q.
The need for fencing around the basin. We have a steel guard rail around the roadway side of the two sides that are adjacent to pavement and parking. The basin is a dry basin which drains down and infiltrates after rain event. We have no objection for a fence.
But why?
But it's an isolated area, it's not very deep, and...
Didn't you say there was going to be additional plantings back there as well?
There's, right, there's, there's buffer plantings against the adjoining lot, and it's guard rail around the two sides where people could actually walk, they'd have to cross the guard rail to get into the basin, which effectively...
Mr. Chairman, it's the policy decision for the board.
Right.
They've done what the professionals have asked them to do in providing the steel guide rail in the area where vehicles will be. There's a blank side on the back, which quite frankly, if you're out in the field, is hard to find, but as a policy issue, it needs to be brought up before the board, so you all understand when you drive down Fort Plains Road that we didn't miss it.
Right, right, right. I understand. I know in some instances where it was close to residential areas and it was wide open, we were always concerned about children venturing in, and we always wanted a fence, but looking at this and seeing the, you know, that it is a wooded area and it's dense, I'm not overly concerned, but if any other board members feel that there is a warranted for a fence, then we should address that.
Okay.
My last comment is just foreclosure on the COA issue. We acknowledge that we have a COA obligation, we've reviewed it with your staff, we understand that it is a cash contribution for this type of use in this zone, and on the record, we acknowledge it.
Mr. Chairman?
That covers V, too?
I went through the variances...
I think we talked about V, they're going to provide sidewalk out on Route 9.
Okay.
If we're going for final on a portion of the site, we should talk about the outside agency approvals, please.
Sure.
Yes, sure. The Monmouth County Planning Board has granted approval. Monmouth County Board of Health has reviewed the plan, and their approval is for the abandonment of the septics and wells. The Freo Soil has granted approval. The DEP LOI was received, there are no wetlands or buffers on the property. The access permit from the DOT is pending, we expect receipt of that in August.
It's important to note, the DOT permit is to reduce the number of driveways, not introduce driveways.
That's correct. We have preliminary approvals from the Howell Township MUD. This is in a service area of New Jersey American Water, it's not in Howell Township's service area. No further approvals from Howell Township. Municipal utilities are required. We have the certified tree expert approval, Shade Tree Commission, I'm sure we have that letter, it was the...
I know that we got Shari's letter.
We have Shari's letter. There are no other outside agencies.
Mr. Chairman, as it relates to the technical report, there are two comments in there I believe the applicant is not going to comply with. On page two of the technical report, D1, the landscaping, I believe they've, at the last meeting, asked for a waiver of foundation plantings, which was discussed. last meeting, asked for a waiver of foundation plantings, which was discussed. And on page three, comment H2 about that large tree, based upon a field examination by the applicant's representatives and Shari Shapiro from our office, we've agreed that the tree will not be saved.
Okay. That's correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mark, anything?
None.
Other than design waivers, I just have one for co-section 188, 226F, placement of street furniture for buildings over 10,000 square feet. Is there any bike racks or benches in, on the vicinity of the site?
There were none proposed. If, if benches on the sidewalk are something that you'd like to see, they can be introduced. It's not something that's standard to a Walgreens. But if that's-
Well, I figured in this day and age with high gas prices, I believe a lot of people might be biking, so, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to putting a bike rack somewhere. It would make good sense.
We can put a bike rack. We'll, we'll work out with your staff the appropriate location, but we don't have a problem with a bike rack.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, I tell you, you're going to be bringing in some fill into this property? Mr. DeFalco? Not, not really too much, no. It's pretty much equated.
Okay.
The excavation from the basin is going to give us just about what we need.
All right, good. Thank you.
Could I tie my horse, could I tie my horse on a bike rack? Because if I can't, I want a hitching post.
You want a hitching, one hitching post and one bike rack.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for board members?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Sure.
First and foremost, Mr. Pap, I want to thank you for, you know, offering to comply with some of our designs that we had, the sign, the sidewalks and all that. But I do have two concerns. One probably is, I don't know if you could address, but I know we don't have an ordinance, but one of my concerns is, is shopping carts. We have a problem up on Lanes Mills and Friendship Roads with, with people leaving shopping carts. So I don't know if Walgreens has any policy, but there are retention devices out there that keep the, the shopping carts on the, on the properties. I don't know if you could relay that to them, or if they have any plans on the shopping carts, but I hate to see a shopping cart being rolled right into, you know, Route 9 when a car's coming, especially next door bowling alley where there's going to be kids. So that's a concern that I have. The other thing is-
Well, I, I want to stop. If they have shopping carts and they're going to be stored out of doors, a corral is required, whether they chain them up, they need to, if that's a-
Corral. That's what I want to hear, a corral.
I had to go there, huh?
Well, they may not store them outside, Ernie, but I could tell you that I've seen Walgreens shopping carts on Route 9. People do roll them outside the store and tend to leave them at the sidewalk.
What, with regard to the shopping carts, I'm going to ask before we conclude if we could take a two-minute break so that I can review that with the Walgreens representative.
Matter of fact, if, this might be a good time to take-
I'd love to hear the second concern, too.
The second concern I have is, listen, I know asphalt is very expensive. I touched on the, the bowling alley. Would your client at least consider maybe just sale coating that parking lot, restriping it so it blends into the other parking lot? You know, you did a beautiful circulation for the Walgreens and the bank. It's going to be a shit parking lot per se, and perhaps just maybe sale coating it. It's not expensive, and restriping, you know, it'll make the whole property look, you know, much more unified. That's the only thing.
With your permission, we'd ask for the 10-minute break at this time, Mr. Chair, and I'll review these with our client. Our direct presentation is concluded. When we return, we'll, we'll look for you for your deliberations.
Yeah, we'll, we'll open up the public when we return. Board will be in recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the board will reconvene. I think our listener, our engineer-
And being respectful. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pap, you met what you're-
Sure. I have one item, one further item to offer. I learned from my clients and from their architect that Walgreens has a shopping cart system similar to a dog, electronic dog collar system. Around the perimeter of the parking lot, they install a low-voltage electric wire that sends a, a signal, and the signal is picked up on the carts, and all the wheels on the carts are locked, and you can't get the carts to roll off the property. And that system will be installed on this site. Was not their intention because they use it usually in an area where there's a security issue, a more urban issue, but there's no objection to introducing it, and they will.
Well, let me ask you this. Now, will the carts be, allow free movement throughout the parking lot?
Around the parking lot.
And if so, then there needs to be a corral for the-
They, they're not stored in outdoor corrals when they're, these are stored internally inside the building. So when they're collected, they're brought inside the building, and I believe your ordinance says that the corral is required when you have outside storage. As far as any further improvements to the bowling alleys property, I don't have authority to do any additional treatments, but the comments that you brought to our attention will be passed on to the property owner, and there may be some change. I have no authority to indicate there be any further change, but the entire central corridor, everything that is shown on Mr. DeFalco's plan will be all new asphalt. And that, Mr. Chair, is your applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions before I open up to the public?
Well, just, Mr. Chair, I think we had a concern with the, the 50-foot buffer around the house. Are we going to subplant that with additional?
Yes. Yes, the, there is 50 feet of planted material plus the wooded area, so it is supplemented. The woods are staying, and we're adding trees to the edge of that to make it a full 50 feet.
How about the density? Anything on the inside, within the buffer?
Not within the wooded area, no.
Ernie, do you think there's a need?
The plan as presented meets the letter of the law. That is, there's a 50-foot area that remains undisturbed. If the board's policy is to make it either a visual barrier or to supplement it so that it's, so the trees are removed and a berm built, they've not met that intent. But from our perspective, they met the, the letter of the law because there's a 50-foot area that remains undisturbed.
It's not a four season, in other words.
It is. No, the area that, that, there's scrub material over there, there's some mature stuff in that area of town, especially behind Pointa Woods. The trees grow good and tall, they're all deciduous. The supplemental is occurring along the perimeter of the stormwater management excavation, which mirrors the edge of the 50-foot buffer.
This is what we have, and all this-
As long as we don't see a need, I don't, you know, until, until you're there and it starts to be developed, you know, to see what you actually have, as long as, as long as, you know, you're not going to be seeing through it, and it's not going to be a nuisance to the homeowner, I mean-
We have, we have a lot of eight-foot-high cedar trees around that wooded line, so we have eight-foot-tall trees. It's not like little shrubs. They're eight-foot-tall cedars. So there will be a visual screen between, looking through the woods, you'll see the back of the cedar trees. And we have shade trees in addition to the cedar trees also, and also shrubs, but the main, the main view is blocked by the cedar trees.
I'm okay.
All right, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anyone from the public who wish to be heard, please come forward. I only ask that if you folks are in agreement with what was said previously, you don't need to repeat each other, just say you're in agreement with what was previously spoken. Yeah, need to say your name and your address and be sworn in.
Sir, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give as part of the truth, the whole truth, anything but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Marion Golda, 24 Plains Road, Howell, New Jersey.
Can you please spell your last name?
Basically, I have a, I have a lot of questions actually in reference to this plan. I recently just bought a new home over here in Howell, less than a year ago, right on Fort Plains Road, and I'm a little concerned that if this project goes through, my property value will decrease. Also, one, one question I have, this lot right now is, it's a wooded lot. One of the questions I have is how many trees are you guys going to destroy or take out?
How much of the lot's going to be cleared?
The packet includes a tree clearing plan that's been submitted for your staff's review.
To answer this gentleman's concern, maybe you can put that on the record.
Yes, on page six of 12, the Woodlands Management Plan, and we've also applied for a Woodlands Management Permit as part of the application. Based on the sample plot of trees that we did, it was, we say that there are 185 trees to be removed from the property. That was the question, how many trees? Approximately 180, 85 trees.
How many trees will-
Speak into the mic, please.
New landscape, and how many new trees are going to be installed, evergreen, shrubs, et cetera?
I can approximate the numbers. It was your pleasure. You want me to know exactly how many of everything?
No, I'm just, I'm just curious because-
Total number. I think our ordinance requires a one-to-one, what's that?
Or cash.
Or cash.
Right, and the engineer's report does say that we're short, and that there will be a major contribution required of-
Do you know how many you're short by?
I think that's in Shari's review letter.
I'm just concerned because once all these trees are removed and the building goes up, I'm going to have direct view to the highway or to the building.
No, well, that's what the whole purpose is. It's all going to be shaded and supplementally planted. You shouldn't be able to see anything from-
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Based upon our calculation, the applicant's required to replace 355 trees. He's proposing to install 66 that would count against that, leaving a deficit of 289.
How many, Ernie?
66?
He's providing 66 that would count as replacement trees, so he's got a deficit of 289.
Now, are new trees going to be planted in back of the bowling alley as well? Because back at a bowling alley, it's, it's just grass.
Nope, that's, that's an existing use, so it's going to be exactly where it's at.
So nothing, that there's no improvements, anything going to be made back there?
No, not at this time.
Now, as far as lighting, what type of lighting is going to be installed on the property? Because I'm basically kind of like in between where the Walgreens proposal is and the public storage, and at night, where the public storage is, the lights stay on at night, and I basically see them in my bedroom.
I think that's a 24-hour facility, isn't it?
Public storage-
They have to have the lights on, have security lighting.
Now, as far as Walgreens, from my understanding, it's, it's-
10:00 PM, they're supposed to be ceasing operations, and I heard testimony that the lights were not going to remain on, correct?
The, the, we, we discussed the hours of operation that are proposed. We also discussed that the township's ordinance does not restrict hours if they were to change. The intention is for the lights to go off one hour after the business closes, and currently the closure is scheduled for 10 o'clock.
But they're confused with the bowling alley operation, that when the bowling alley shares the parking, those lights will not go off until the bowling alley is done using the facility, so it's not strictly 10.
I don't believe there's any spillage from their lights onto anything.
We have a shoebox style, what, what did you describe?
Yes, the lights are shoebox style, focused downward away from the Fort Plains Road area, all towards the driveway and, and the parking lot. So the lights, for instance, there's a light pole near the retention pond focused towards the bowling alley in that direction. There's a light pole above the detention pond focused towards the Walgreens, so they're all away from Fort Plains. Nothing is focused towards Fort Plains at all. Everything's in the opposite direction.
And you'll look at the detail. All of the bulbs are recessed, there's no exposed bulbs.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. DeFalco, you have the lighting plan on page 12 of 12. Maybe the gentleman could just see what the, the detail is, so he'll have a piece of mind to know what kind of lighting fixtures.
Yeah, I just want to make sure-
Yeah, we have them on our plans.
You know, some kind of tower, towering lights?
No.
As long as they angle down, I don't have no issues.
This is the light. And then, that's the shape of it, and the location of it. The closest light to Fort Plains is this way, and it's pointing in that direction. These are foot candle diagrams. This is the lowest. This is less than .3 foot candles at the intersection, drops to zero. What is your house light, Ken? There's no light from this at your house.
Now, will there be any, any trees planted in between, let's just say, the Walgreens property line and the public storage? Because it's, currently, there's all trees at that plate, at, on the perimeter in between that separating the Walgreens property and the public storage. And once, once that goes out, I'm directly facing the highway.
So where's your home in relation to this property? Can you point that out on the map?
A little bit below that.
Mr. DeFalco, can you please speak into the mic?
My lot is over here, it starts 10, and my home is basically in this vicinity.
Okay. Now, the trees that you see across the street from you now, where that residential home is, can you see Route 9 through that?
The only section of Route 9 I see is, is through the public storage.
Yeah.
But if those trees get removed, it's going to open it all up.
Well, there's, there, there are new trees being planted around the parking lot, and then the buildings are being constructed. It's going to be very difficult to see Route 9 through the trees and the buildings. Plus, on the public storage, there's about a 40-foot buffer between the first building and our property line, which has some substantial trees just to the south of our property line.
But just for the record, it should be noted, along the common property line where the wall's getting built, there's no additional landscaping proposed along there.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Now, as far as, you mentioned before, sound speed strips. How loud is that? Because I have a concern because I wouldn't hear it.
You wouldn't hear it. You ever, you ever go over, when you go to the toll booths?
Yeah.
On the Jersey Turnpike, those rumble kind of things, you hear the rumbling in your car? That's, that's what they are. They're not sound that is audible from anybody outside.
Feel.
Yeah, you'll feel it.
And that's at 50 miles an hour, you might hear a little bit north, but at 25, 30-
On the park where you'd hit them, yeah.
Not going to hear much.
In that parking lot, you'll never hear them.
I'm just concerned.
You'll feel them in your car.
I'm concerned about noise, you know, noise from the highway.
No, you get no noise from that.
The spike strips, et cetera. Now, as far as deliveries, tractor-trailer route, would it be primarily, the deliveries would be from Route 9?
I would believe so.
Coming into, into the property and exiting the property?
The main artery serving this facility is Route 9. It would come in the driveway, and it would turn in behind the building and, or around and exit either Fort Plains if they're going north, or Route 9 if they're going south.
Now, I have a concern. I was here at the last hearing, where I, I believe the Howell Township Police Department did a study over there?
Yes.
And they disagreed with that, that driveway going into the, the new driveway that's proposed.
That was before we offered the strips and the raised sidewalk speed humps. That was before we offered the strips and the raised sidewalk speed humps, and now they've approved the plan.
Now, I'm still concerned as far as the traffic coming in and out. Especially, you have an access point at the bowling alley that's currently there, that's still going to remain there, and you're saying that both the parking lots are going to be shared. So is there a need for another driveway?
Yes, there is. There's a need for the Walgreens driveway. It's a different use. The bowling alley driveway is shared for the parking purposes of the bowling alley. But for somebody to go to Walgreens, they shouldn't need to drive through the bowling alley parking lot to get to the Walgreens.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Mr. Tantillo, tell me if I'm off base here. As a practical matter, people who try to enter the bowling alley never come in the second entrance.
Nope.
They go through the traffic light, they come in the first entrance, and they drive the length of the bowling alley, and they go park over by that accountant's office.
Most of them go out the back anyhow and go to Burgerville.
But what I'm getting at is to try to allay our neighbor's fear here, is that it isn't intended that the bowling alley entrance is going to be the second entrance.
No.
It's intended that second entrance is for Walgreens only. Those people won't be cutting through, in point of fact.
I bowl there myself, and I wouldn't go in that driveway to go to the bowling alley. That would be stupid.
I've lived there since I was a kid, and I don't know anyone who drives past the first entrance to come in the second entrance on purpose. I would think that the second entrance really serves as the entrance to Walgreens.
Honestly, I'd worry about putting speed bumps on Fort Plains Road for the speed they go down that road. I wouldn't worry about that parking lot.
Well, that's one of my issues, because I've written many letters to the Howell Township Police Department in reducing the speed limits and stuff like that. But I, you know, cars are still flying way above the speed limit. And that leads me to my next issue, is you mentioned something about a safety, concern of sight distance when approaching that driveway. Now, the road curves, basically, Fort Plains Road between Burgerville and, what is it, West Farms Road, it's a winding road, okay? And basically, probably 100 feet or so from the north, northern proposed driveway, and, I don't know, about 200 feet from the southern, there's two bends there. I know that the individual who lives across the street from me, who is basically in that small, little wooded area, he, anytime he pulls out of his driveway, he almost gets hit. I mean, you always hear people honking, et cetera, and I don't think it's a really good idea to put that entrance on Fort Plains Road.
Mr. Peters, isn't there a sight triangle on both sides there?
There is a sight triangle. It's been provided. I'm not going to testify for the applicant. I'm going to ask the applicant to do it, because we're not the bad guys here.
Mr. Pap?
Sure.
Is there a sight triangle?
Sight triangles requested by your staff, and they are in conformance. And early this evening, when Mr. Fears testified, he testified that the driveway location was really at an optimum location, because the curve in the road that is adjacent to the driveway provides a benefit, not a detriment, and that there is excellent sight distance in both directions.
It takes care of that problem.
Now, is there a way that, I don't know who actually makes this decision, but to lowering the speed limit on Fort Plains Road?
We have no jurisdiction on that.
The governing body needs to ask the Department of Transportation. That's the whole process. Takes forever.
Now, with the building of this Walgreens and this proposed driveway, have your engineers got an idea of any additional traffic coming and going on Fort Plains Road?
There was a full traffic report delivered to this board and the professionals. Route 9 as a state highway and Fort Plains as a collector roadway. The report confirms that the roads can handle the traffic and that there does not create any unsafe conditions.
Mr. Chair, just while we're on that, and I think it'll probably address, or probably be necessary for several other comments, quickly on the law for that. This is a permitted use, and the Supreme Court and appellate division have been very clear for permitted use is that generating additional traffic in and of itself is not a reason to deny an application. It may be, and we've done it here, a reason to contribute prorata to improvements on the roads. But unless there's a lethal condition, a very dangerous condition, you can't use the additional traffic as a means to deny the application.
That's not, that's not one reason where we have grounds to deny an application. Increased traffic is not considered a grounds for denial.
For permitted use.
All right, back to, just one last thing, with the landscape and the trees and stuff like that. Basically, your improvements for landscape would only be on the Walgreens property.
That's correct.
And no additional modifications to the bowling alley area.
There are some shade trees along the south side of the bowling alley, which was buffering the parking lot from the building, but nothing around the northeast or west side of the bowling alley is proposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board as the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name and give us your address?
Frank Pinkus, Ketchum Road, P.I.N.K.U.S. Quick question or comment on the rumble strips? Are they going to be in an area where people walking from their cars to anywheres would have to go over them? Because I could see that as an issue.
They are cut into the road, not raised up, and they are designed to be in the cartways where there are, we can't tell someone that they can't walk across the cartway, but there are pedestrian crosswalks immediately adjacent to them.
Is it a good idea for having anybody walk on them at all and twisting an ankle?
They look like...
I know what they look like. I think they're a wonderful thing, but I don't know if they fit in a parking lot.
The Department of Public Safety Patrolman Scott Brooks found them to be appropriate. We accepted that. I don't see that as an issue.
Okay, that's all I have.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board as the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. My name is Charles O'Donnell. My address is 27 Barron Meadow Lane, Howell, New Jersey. I've been a resident for 20 years. A couple of concerns and observations. I'd like to ask, when the traffic study was done, what time of day was it conducted? The reason I ask that is the traffic and pedestrian traffic on Fort Plains Road changes. During the evening, you have many pedestrians walking with or against the traffic on that small two-lane road. Now, you're going to add a distraction with a sign. I foresee this causing some difficulties. The other issue is, at the current time, if someone does not wish to stop at the light to enter Fort Plain, or enter Route 9 headed south, they merely cut through the parking lot. It's a common practice. It's seen every day. We're now going to have two entrances into Route 9 to avoid the light. This road also, although it will possibly increase traffic, will cause a hazard, in my mind, to the pedestrians who are walking along Fort Plains, which does not have any You have a bowling alley, I believe it serves liquor, alcohol, has an alcohol license, adjacent to a building which stores drugs, which at 10 o'clock, all the lights are going to go out. I see an issue occurring there. It is wooded and closed off on two or four sides for observation. The loading dock is on the blind side of the building. You don't enter or break into a building by way of the front door, unless it's a jewelry store and you're using a four-by-four. So you have a crime element involved in it, a possibility of a crime element. You have those issues. My main concern is the safety of people walking along Fort Plains Road. I think it should be taken into consideration. The other concern, of course, is the element of crime that could take place in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might respond to improvements to Fort Plains Road. The offer of your applicant is that your township engineer is currently conducting an investigation of improvements to Fort Plains Road, and we indicated on the record that we will participate as directed. And I even specifically stated that if sidewalks are part of that improvement plan, we recognize that that would be imposed on us. But we stepped back from coming up with a plan and did as we were asked to just agree to participate in your township engineer's plan. That remains our position.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board as the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name and give us your address?
I'm Nancy Abrams, A.B.R.A.M.S. I live at 24 Barron Meadow Lane, Howell, New Jersey. I've been here my whole life. I would like to know if the board knows that there is a project application down the street from us at the Brookside Country Club that has the potential of increasing the traffic on Fort Plains Road by much more than it is right now. It's an application before the zoning board that's introducing a day camp, a daycare center, and a executive picnic. And we're hearing that before the zoning board currently. This sight triangle that they spoke of, the viewpoint, is that from the people leaving Walgreens, or is that us approaching this driveway?
Sight triangles are for vehicles that are stopped...
I think we should get Mr. Fears to answer this question.
Sight triangles... Mr. Fears, you got to come up and use the mic.
The sight triangles are designed for people who would be in the driveway, stopped, waiting for an opportunity to enter Fort Plains Road. The purpose is to assure that they have adequate visibility to do so in safety.
But sir, what about people traveling Fort Plains Road trying to get into the facility? What guarantees then the visibility to be able to do that safely?
They require less visibility for that movement than a vehicle departing from a stop sign entering into the roadway. So since they require less, the sight triangle provided for the driveway accommodates the entry movement satisfactorily.
Okay, I'd like to know, has there been a study to see if this type of business, both the bank and Walgreens, is necessary in Howell Township? There are 11 banks up and down Route 9 in Howell alone.
That's not our jurisdiction to decide.
Excuse me?
It's not really our jurisdiction to decide what properties are... None of a property can build whatever they want, which is legally, you know, I mean, it'd be foolish for them to put in something that's not going to be marketable. I'm sure they've done a market research, and there's got to be a need for it. They wouldn't be spending millions of dollars in order to put an application in and put a building up.
My concern is for the mom-and-pop business across the street. They've been there, and they've been trying to establish their business, and with a big conglomerate like Walgreens coming in, you know, they're going to be out of business.
Mr. Chair, just on that, under the municipal land use law, so long as a use is permitted by the ordinance, the board is, doesn't have any jurisdiction to talk about whether it's needed or what the detrimental effects would be, unless there's some variances that are associated with it. So we can't ask them why they're putting it here or look at what the social or economic detriment would be to other businesses located in the area. If we did, I can tell you, we would go to court undoubtedly, and we would have no chance of winning, because the law is that clear on the subject.
I had also a concern about the bar in the bowling alley. And I've been here my whole life, and I've seen lots of activity, mischievous activity, graffiti constantly on the bowling alley. You know, I'm sure there's incidents with cars being vandalized as well. But I just, I'm afraid that this is going to enhance that and make it worse. As far as the detention basin is on this property, water in our area is always a big concern. It is for me down the street a half a mile. And detention basins on the storage unit, there's three of them. I never see them empty, and with this last rainfall last week, they were almost overflowing. So my concern is mosquitoes in the summer and just stagnant water sitting. I don't know whether the facility's drainage was done properly, but that was years ago. But this has the potential of being the same thing. And then these people that live on that house, they have water behind them, they have water on the side of them, and how is that going to impact their lives? That was my concern for them.
Mr. DeFalco, can I...
Yes, the basin was properly designed. We did soil test pit excavations in the basin. What we discovered was that about four or five feet below the surface, there is a clay layer. And it's our estimation that the self-storage facility, when that was built, did not go deep enough to remove that barrier. That is why those basins are always full of water. We plan to excavate all that bed soil out, replace it with clean sand, so there'll be percolation through the soil down, and there won't be standing water in the basin. No mosquito problem.
I'm happy to hear that. Another concern I have is the pedestrian traffic. Point of Woods has 758 units divided between houses, condos, and townhouses, and many of those people get on a bus to go to New York. There's a lot of foot traffic. And there's a lot of foot traffic coming down Fort Plains Road because of Tuscana Development, which is about 186 homes. And many times around this curve that you speak of, right behind the bowling alley, people are walking. It's dark, and they come close to getting hit many, many times. And I have a very concern for their safety, as well as the bus stop on Route 9, where there was talk about moving it. If you move it further south from this proposed site, those people will have farther to walk. They're going to be coming through the parking lots and being in the way of cars maneuvering in those adjoining lots, and when they're trying to get back to their homes. And I don't want to see anybody hit. My last concern is, for many, many years, Fort Plains Road was very bad condition in pavement. And recently, last year, I believe it was, they repaved it, so we have a nice, smooth surface finally. With this construction going in and then connecting to the sewer lines and water lines, will the pavement be disrupted, and then we'll have to live with a rough surface again?
To answer your question on the pavement, the restoration of the pavement will be to the township engineer's satisfaction, and there won't be any rough trenches. Best case is that we do infrared trench repair, which is new technology, which basically reheats the old asphalt and reblends it all in together, so it's rolled as one unit. Worst case is, we have to overlay the whole road brand new.
So there won't be any patching?
There won't be any patching and trenching, as you commonly know it.
And that's the applicant's responsibility?
And just so we're clear, worst case means the developers' cost worst case, not the municipality's worst case. Our best case is you tear up one of our roads, you pave it edge to edge. That's the town's best case. It may be the developer's worst case. I don't want there to be confusion, either by members of the public or the board. If the township engineer determines, or the Sewer Utility Authority engineer determines that they can't properly fix the trench pavement, the area will be completely overlaid.
I just want to, how many spots, parking spots are there again with the Walgreens total? And that would be sufficient when the bowling alley has a tournament? So they're not parking on Fort Plains Road ever again?
Walgreens is ninety-eight.
Right.
And on the bowling alley, there is?
One hundred-four.
Hundred-four, so there's two hundred and two spaces altogether, which is about seventy more than, seventy or eighty more than is out there today.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? This board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Carol Reed. I live on 172 Fort Plains Road. I think I'll sit down. I'm totally against, is this on? I'm totally against the driveway going out to Fort Plains Road. When the storage facility came in, they nixed that because of traffic. And I'd like to see it removed. There's no reason for them to go out the backway. They have plenty of traffic on Route 9. It'll affect the residents, including Mr. Golda, right across the street, with traffic. And it also will be a liability for stealing, which is one reason why Home Depot never put a driveway at the back. They have lawn mowers and everything else stolen. So it's a theft deterrent. I'd like them to consider that. And it would make people in Fort Plains Road very happy if you eliminated that driveway. Is that a possibility?
No, it's not. First of all, we don't have any outdoor sales of material like Home Depot does. No, nothing is outside to be stolen. So the need for a rear access for the general public is very important. And one of the things to consider is that if there was no rear access, anyone on Fort Plains who wanted to go to the Walgreens would need to go to Burgerville Road, make a right at the light of Route 9, enter the site, and then leave back to Route 9 to travel south to the first jug handle, to make a U-turn at Route 9, to come back on Route 9 to get off at Cassell.
Wait a minute.
Cross again and go back and travel probably about four miles out of their way.
That's not true. You'd go around the bowling alley and make a right and it would go right past the store if you were coming down Fort Plains going north.
You mean using the bowling alley property?
Well, you could go right to the corner, but that's what they do now. They use the bowling alley property to avoid the light.
And they're still gonna use the bowling alley property?
And when you do this driveway, they're gonna go through Walgreens and avoid the light. Same thing.
If I might, we do not anticipate that we're going to change the number of, the volume of vehicles that come through the site. The issue that, as Patrolman Brooks pointed out, was the volume was not the issue, it was the speed that they moved through the site. And the proper designs that are incorporated make the driveway a safe one. And your applicant has provided testimony that it's needed and we have a very substantial residential community behind us and we wanna make certain that we are convenient to them. We are a convenience facility.
Well, it may be convenient for Walgreens, but it won't be convenient for the residents of Fort Plains Road. I've lived there all my life and one more driveway on Fort Plains Road is not really helpful. Home Depot didn't put it there, the storage facility didn't put it there, and they listen to the residents. And I don't see why Walgreens, I like Walgreens, I shop there almost every week, but I don't think I'm gonna shop there if they're not gonna listen to the residents. There's four miles of Fort Plains Road. You wanna alienate those people from not shopping there because you don't care that you're coming out to Fort Plains Road? You know, let's be honest, your customers are the people around there. And if you alienate them, they won't go there. You're not gonna make us happy by having that driveway there. Home Depot listened to us, I was at that application. Storage facility listened to us, we don't wanna come, any driveway onto Fort Plains Road and no commercial outlet. We are a residential area, we have a lot of traffic coming from Route 9 down Fort Plains Road is a side strip to Route 9. Tuscana is another development, we have Home Depot there. How much more can we take? I mean, this traffic is ridiculous. We're just as busy on Fort Plains Road between 4:00 and 6:00 at night as Highway 9. I can't go to my mailbox and bend over without getting hit. And I live a mile from this spot. Be considerate of the residents. Do you want this facility to have business or you don't? I mean, you know, your customers are the surrounding areas, Tuscana, Point of Woods, people on Fort Plains Road. Remember that. Every other facility that was on Route 9 there, Home Depot and Storage Facility said, okay, we'll go along with it. But you guys don't seem to wanna do that. The other issue, I have another issue also with the drainage. You keep talking, they were talking about the three basins on storage, public storage. There's a reason that they have three detention ponds there. There's an underground stream that runs from Point of Woods across the road to where the public storage is. It used to be a trailer park. The trailer park had septic problems unbelievably, so they had to take it out of there and they put a facility that doesn't need septic. There is an underground stream there and there is a problem with water. Okay? And that's the reason that you have three full basins. The water's coming from underground, it's not gonna go away. So there is a drainage problem too. I don't know what else to say about this, that I like Walgreens, I shop Walgreens other places, but I may not shop here because you're not listening to us. Thank you.
Ma'am, yeah, no, seeing at the hour, I don't believe we're going to get to our last application, Fairfield at Howell, and I just wanna know if we wanna reschedule that.
Mr. Flieger here?
Mr. Chairman, we'll, at your discretion, do what you suggest. We have a pretty, actually, easy application, but I don't wanna keep anybody here.
At 10:30, it's been the policy of this board. We're all professionals, have to work the next day, so we don't wanna make decisions at late hours at night here.
Can we accept the notice minimally?
I recommend it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Looking at the schedule, if you wanna doubleheader on the fourth, the other application is the only thing on that night.
Is there anything sooner for this one?
There is August 7th. There's one application that we've promised the first slot.
August 7th? You're gonna be second either way. I think August 7th is preferable. If that's okay with the order.
August, August 7th, that's fine.
Okay, and you'll be second on August 7th. So the application of Fairfield at Howell and Salvatore Barbogallo, application numbers SP-911 and SD-2927 will be carried to August 7th, 2008. It'll be the second application to be heard that night. They'll be here in the main meeting room of the municipal building on Preventorium Road, 7:30. There will be no further notice to property owners. We have an extension through August 7th?
Correct, yes.
Okay. If you could just follow that up with a letter.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Ma'am, you were up before, is there any, I just wanna make sure if there's anybody else who hasn't spoken that would like to speak.
Okay, ma'am, if you could just say your name again for the record so that our-
Nancy Abrams. Nancy Abrams. I have one additional question. I'm sorry to take the board's time. I'd like to go over to the-
Sure.
This here off, this diagram is the U-turn and it feeds onto Burgerville Road. Burgerville Road is like a throughway from Jackson to Route 9. And there's lots of traffic that travel that in the morning and in the evening where we cannot access that light. And it's very dangerous. And with this driveway back here coming out, it's gonna increase the traffic, increase the problems of trying to feed out for us. Perhaps a light would work there, but it's very close to Route 9 light. But it's been a problem for many, many years. And I'd just like to know if there's anything that'd be done to alleviate that. Because putting the driveway there is going to make it even worse.
The applicant agreed to abide by the recommendations of the township engineer who was studying that entire stretch of roadway from Burgerville all the way back through the site plans to the south on Fort Plains Road. So there is an ongoing study being done and we've agreed to participate in any way that we can. And that's all we really can do.
We are sandwiched in between Burgerville and West Farms. And at West Farms, when Home Depot went in, they had a convenient light for the shoppers to come and go. We do not have that safety. At the opposite end, where Fort Plains overlaps with Burgerville, we take all life in our hands every time we pull out. And that's the way it is at this point of intersection as well. And I would just like the board to know that and consider that in this application. Thank you.
Anyone in public wishing to be heard? Seeing that I'm closing the public portion, board members, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I heard what the, some of the residents had to offer up. I'm just wondering, Julie, is the spillover of lightage that's taking place over at the storage facility, you know, maybe you might write a little something over to code enforcement and have them look at that and see if some shields need to go up? You know? And, you know, Title 39 has been authorized on this application, so I'm confident that if there's any obsessive, excessive abuse of cutting through on this piece of property, it'll be addressed by the police department to some degree.
Mr. Chair? Yes? I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, before Mr. Tantilla makes that comment, I just, I'm compelled to make one kinda comment.
Sure.
First and foremost, it's great to hear that the residents come out when these applications and give us their feedback. It's very important for the planning process because planning is all about listening and trying to do the right thing. And with that said, I mean, these are our neighbors and they do raise some valid concerns. I originally thought when we first got the comments from Patrolman Scott Brooks that he was on point. I'll be quite frank, I was surprised this evening when we heard the comments from Mr. Pap that he, you know, decided to change his mind. I really did think he got it right the first time when he asked to have it removed. He'll likely use the parking lot as a cut-through Route 9. There is nobody in this room that's gonna tell me that that doesn't happen. I drive down Route 9, I see it happen at Aldridge all the time. When that light is red on Aldridge, they cut right through the gas station. So, you know, I understand why the applicant wants to do that. It's better business for them, but again, I thought Patrolman Brooks got it right the first time. I understand the calming devices will have some impact on slowing it down, but there's the potential of people always cutting through. The other issue I just wanna make is that there's a shortage of 289 trees. And one of our neighbors has a concern who bought a house on Fort Plains, not too far from there. There's gonna be a shortage. And I don't think it was addressed that why perhaps that some of those shortage of trees could be planted in areas near the bowling alley to address our neighbor's concerns. This is what planning is all about. I am so, you know, hearing the feedback and trying to address these concerns for our neighbors. And I just didn't, Mr. Pap, I just didn't understand why that couldn't have been addressed, as why the trees couldn't have been placed there. There's gonna be a shortage, you're gonna have to make a money contribution. Why couldn't that just be done?
The area behind the bowling facility that would be available for planting is the public right-of-way. The public right-of-way is under the jurisdiction of the township. If part of the sidewalk and road improvement plan that Mr. Nunziata, the township engineer, comes up with is landscaping, you not only have the cash contribution for sidewalk and roads, which has been a pledge made by the applicant, you have the equivalent cash of 289 trees given to the township. And if it's his intention to landscape that, there'll be ample funds. But the area that's available for landscaping isn't part of the applicant's or even the bowling alley's property. But that opportunity's there and the funds will be there.
Mr. Chair, if I might, going forward from what Mr. Castro had said, if it were permissible to supplement the existing 50-foot buffer that's remaining around the out parcel house, that would, to some extent, take care of the residents' comment. The problem you're gonna have is that in trees, you're gonna plant trees. So we may have to trade off trees for shrubs. As long as the board understands that, the board's not getting the full value to 289 trees. It's capped at $35,000, I think. So you're not getting $85,000 worth of trees. So if we can put three or four or five in or supplement it so that in the 50-foot buffer, it's a little more dense, I want the board members to understand, you're not gonna get additional trees. You're gonna get some form of buffering in the existing 50-foot buffer that's basically scrub pines and old pin oaks. And we'll do something so that the neighbors are getting the best bang for their buck from the planning board and the applicant this evening.
From the applicant's perspective, there's no issue at all with that?
Mr. Chair, I just want, Ernie, thank you because it's important that the public understand. I mean, a lot of times, we understand what's going on, but they get explanations that they may not understand. It's important that they have it on record and that they know. So, thanks for that suggestion, Ernie.
Mr. Chair, the purpose of our Woodlands Ordinance was for beautification of the township. The money, if we can't replace the trees for the landscaping, that money could be used in other places in the township for beautification. Either the money goes there or the trees get planted. Now, there's no reason why Mr. Pap and especially you, who have a tremendous liaison with all of our people, could not sit down with Shari from CME, our certified tree expert, and find out why we cannot do more, use that contribution in lieu of the money, and plant a beautiful buffer of trees along Route 9 in some manner. Not shrubs, but something really nice.
Along Fort Plains Road, sir?
No, I'm talking about the visibility on Route 9. We heard some comments.
The residents are more concerned about Fort Plains Road. That's where their concern are.
We're most willing to meet with your staff, including Shari, to see if we can supplement the buffer in the rear. As far as the portion of property that's owned by the township, if directed to plant rather than give cash, we can plant on that too. But I think it's, the answer is, we're more than willing to work with-
Well, knowing you, I'm sure you will be able to discuss this with them. And I think that you can alleviate the concerns of the residents. And I thank Mr. Castro because that's the purpose of our Woodlands Ordinance.
We can sit down, it's essentially helping her spend that money. If she wants us to spend it right there, then that's what we'll do.
Mr. Chair?
I just wanna understand that a little better as to what we just agreed to.
We will agree to bring to the attention of the shade tree expert, the suggestion that there be additional plantings in the woods- the suggestion that there be additional plantings in the woods. We'll ask what she finds to be appropriate. I think we're going to be talking about some form of pines and hollies, that's the typical infill, four-season planting. And we'll also ask that she look at the publicly-owned portion of the Fort Plains right-of-way to determine if that's a location that she wants to see additional plantings. And I would suggest that we put on the record, that's certainly going to be in conjunction with Mr. Nunziato, as he's doing his investigation of road improvements. Additional plants are required, comes off the cash contribution, there's no objection.
So then all that we're talking about is that you're going to consult with Shari, you're not here tonight promising that any tree at all is going to go in there?
We'll agree, because we have an excess cash contribution that will potentially be reduced by cooperating with her, that we'll do what she directs.
I think that's very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
After reviewing everything, I think this applicant has really bent over. Anything we wanted done, they've done. I think this is a great plan, and I'd like to make a motion to approve preliminary and final site plan for the minor subdivision.
I'd like to second the motion, and just make a comment while I'm doing it. Being in the industry for a half a century, I don't think...
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, wait, wait, Mr. Schneider, I don't believe you can second, because you weren't here for the whole testimony.
You didn't hear the whole, the whole applicant. You could participate, but you can't vote on it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, but I do have a comment.
Yes.
Being in the industry for 50 years, I don't think I can alleviate the fears of the public that this is not going to create a tremendous amount of traffic. I don't know that much about traffic for a bank, but I do know the traffic for, in the pharmacy business, and I really think between nine in the morning and 10 at night, you're not going to see a tremendous amount of volume at any particular time that's going to be a detriment to the public.
Mr. Chair.
You have a motion and a second on the table.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. My comment is, certainly, we're still subject to Officer Brooks's letter on the record.
Yes.
All right? And this is a preliminary and final for the Walgreens only?
Yes.
The bank still has to come back for a...
Final.
For the, it's a minor subdivision, that's absolutely, and the bank still has to come back for the final.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was late this evening, because as many of you know, I have another commitment to another board, not to a board of trustees I sit on. Once a month, I have a major conflict with being here, unfortunately, because I was slightly late. I do not get to vote tonight, but I did want to put my comments on the record with respect to the rear access. I think that the applicant is satisfied, the concerns, has made changes. The changes from the last meeting to this meeting are, I think, monumental, and I think for as many folks who are concerned, I think that there are also folks who will welcome the ability to get in and out of that facility when they've got a kid with an ear infection or when they need to just run in for regular maintenance medications or what have you, without having to do that ride on Route Nine. So in that respect, I think that the rear entrance is appropriate. I wonder, I question whether or not you'll be able to put up some "no-through" fare signs. That shouldn't be a big problem, would it? You know, just to remind people that they shouldn't be using it to cut through.
Typically, we say we'll abide by your Department of Public Safety and your police officer with regard to that type of signage.
Okay. But in general, I echo the sentiments of Mr. Schneider, Mr. Macastro. I think it was a very good application, it was presented very well, all of the professionals were very professional and prepared. That's nice to see. And if I could vote, I would, but since I won't, I won't.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Who is the second?
Mr. Burgess. Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Macastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Bislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board all, I thank you, and goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, Mr. Macastro had some...
I'm going to hold on my remarks until next meeting, if that's okay.
You're going to hold on to next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing there's no further business, can I have a motion? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one comment.
Mr. Schneider has one comment.
There was a great concern, because the township had not selected a certified tree expert to finalize as a township. When our applications are completed, there was, at this point, no follow-through for to see that everything was done according to resolution.
In other words, verification, inspection type stuff.
Right. The Shade Tree Commission, which I'm a member of, had asked the chairwoman to prepare a memorandum to ask that CME be able to do these final inspections. The memorandum went to the council and to the manager and was approved with no cost to the taxpayer. It will be only through escrow funds. So therefore, as of now, I'm happy to report to the board that there will be final inspection of all finished applications to make sure that these developers have and will follow through exactly as we wished.
That's good. Chairman?
Mr. Peters, can you, Mr. Schneider, I'm unaware of that, so I think that's great. It was my understanding, though, that with respect to the township certified tree expert, with respect to applications, our certified tree expert had one role, which was to make sure that everything was...
Yes, our firm currently holds the appointment of Planning Board Certified Tree Expert. It was my understanding that the Director of Public Works, Mr. Kramer, was fulfilling the municipal position, to the extent that he and Mr. Nunziato could find projects that would not cost the taxpayers money, if they simply didn't have the manpower to accomplish those tasks, they were going to try to get some of that work over to us to expedite it. I don't know, Mr. Schneider, that's great news for my firm. I hadn't received a copy of that. I do know that based upon the manpower shortages municipalities going through in these tough economic times, if an application can be reviewed through developer's escrow accounts, you certainly have the ability to go out and hire a consultant, which is what we would hope to do with the municipality. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening.